Welcome to this virtual hearing of the further hearing into the regulation of building standards in New South Wales. Before I commence, I'd like to pay my respects to the Gadigal people, who are the traditional owners of the land upon which the parliament sits. And that that respect is extended to all Aboriginal persons present and all of those who are taking part through through the broadcast in this proceedings. Today's hearing is to be held as a totally virtual hearing. This enables the work of the committee to continue during the COVID-19 pandemic without compromising the health and safety of the witnesses, the staff and all the members of parliament. So I'd ask for everyone's patience if we do have any technical difficulties throughout the hearing. If participants do lose their internet connection, they are reminded to simply rejoin the meeting through the link that has been provided to them through the secretariat. Today we'll be hearing from some critical witnesses. We commence with two property owners who will tell us from the front line what it's like to be dealing with an industry that has such lax regulation in New South Wales, what that means to individual property owners, individual households. We will then also hear from local government, New South Wales, Randwick Council and the City of Sydney Council. A hearing from a first from from a local government perspective, the difficulties in dealing with building standards and building remediation in New South Wales. We'll then hear from Engineers Australia, the Insurance Council of Australia and Consult Australia, critical stakeholders. They'll deal not only with the concerns about the lack of professional indemnity insurance, but also other matters requiring the attention of parliament for the proper regulation of buildings. We will then finally hear from the Institute of Building Surveyors and the Association of Australian Certifiers. Before I commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. Today's hearing is being broadcast live on the parliament's webcast and will be placed on the committee's website when it becomes available. In accordance with broadcasting guidelines, media representatives are reminded to take responsibility about what they publish about the committee's proceedings. And I remind people that parliamentary privilege, whilst it applies to matters during the committee, does not apply to matters that are said or reported outside of the committee. Committee's hearings are not intended to be a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. And so I remind all witnesses and members to stick to the issues rather than the personalities. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness. It's a matter this committee takes seriously and were required to do under a resolution of the House adopted in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness can only take can only answer if they have more time to reflect or have they or they have access to additional documents, in which case witnesses are entitled to take a question on notice and provide a written answer within 21 days. A few notes on virtual hearing etiquette. Could I remind committee members to clearly identify who questions are addressed to? And could I remind people when they are making a contribution, particularly witnesses, if you could restate your name when you begin to answer a question so Hansard can distinguish between the different witnesses? Please, could I remind people to put their microphones on mute when they're not contributing? And obviously to take it off mute immediately before you contribute. Members and witnesses are requested to avoid speaking over each other, which makes it extremely difficult for Hansard, given the nature of these proceedings. And could I ask people if they could to speak quietly and directly into the microphone to assist both the broadcast and Hansard? I would now like to welcome our first two witnesses, Mr. Olivia Burgess and Mr. Patrick Wang. Thank you both very much for attending today. Starting with you, Mr. Wang, if you could give your name, your position, and then take either an oath or an affirmation, copies of which have been provided to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hubridge. My name is Patrick Wang. I am a property owner of Nine Hurst South Street in Parramatta. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thanks very much, Mr. Wang. Mr. Burgess?
Hello. Yes, my name is Oliver Burgess. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you both very much for your attendance today. The procedure before the committee will be you're both now welcome to give a short opening to explain why you're here and what the key issues are that you want to get across to the committee. And then we'll then move to questioning for the balance of the hour that we have set aside. So we might use the same order in which you were sworn in. Mr. Wang, did you want to give a brief opening?
Ah, yes, I do. Thank you.
Proceed.
Thank you to the committee and good morning and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Patrick Wang and I am a buyer of an off the plan apartment in Parramatta according to Imperial Towers. This building has been issued with prohibition order after audits revealed serious structural fire resistance and waterproofing defects back in November of 2020. I believe I am one of many Australians who are now suffering, cornered into a position where we cannot settle on our home, we cannot leave the contract and we do not know when this will end. In June of 2021, a prohibition order was issued by the building commissioner to the developer. This had a condition preventing the Strata Plan and occupation certificate from being registered until defects were fixed. In July, this prohibition order was amended by Fair Trading in New South Wales. The Strata Plan was allowed to be registered and please note the defects were not fixed. With this consequent approval of the Strata Plan before the sunset date, we buyers of Imperial Towers were locked into the contract. What was at first our right to rescind our contract if the building was not complete by sunset date had now become a trap. May I add that the occupation certificate has still not been approved. I do not believe private certifiers should be allowed to issue the occupation certificate for Imperial Towers. It is public knowledge of the misconducts and malpractices by certain private certifiers and I believe it would be wrong if they allowed to certify Imperial Towers. Is it fair that I now have to purchase a home with major defects which would be privately certified by those not known for their morality? I would like to see policies for buyers which ensures their protection when defects and faults occur in the building, which may cause immediate evacuation as we have been seeing on news. These costs should not be shouldered onto the buyer, especially if there had been major serious defects found in the stages prior to completion. I want to see developers taking liabilities of defects of these buildings in conjunction to there being protections for purchasers if these developers go bankrupt. I would like to see the sunset date redefined. If the sunset date is able to be altered in favour of the vendor, then on behalf of purchasers, there must be fairness and clarity. I would like to see regulations into sales contracts, but there is even ground for both the vendor and purchaser. It is unfair, especially in our case, when the vendor has complete power in the sales contract. Thank you to the committee's continued efforts into ensuring we're building standards and I hope present buyers and future buyers will be able to benefit from these efforts to ensure a safer and better regulated New South Wales. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Wang, and thanks for setting out a complex story so clearly. We really do appreciate it. Mr. Burgess?
Hi, yeah, my name's Oliver Burgess. I'm also a purchaser of a unit in the Imperial Towers. And yeah, much the same as Patrick has said, he already set up the situation that we face. I would just like to point out a few issues that I also see. The main issue I see is the sunset date. You know, it's a clause in the contract that puts a time limit on the contract's validity. So this usually has the effect of, you know, if the vendor hasn't completed by that date, then both the vendor and purchaser have the right to walk away, get their money back. However, like in this case, it's been completely voided. The vendor has found a loophole, basically, and so we cannot end our contract. There's no date when anything might be complete. So we're just in a limbo right now. I think there definitely needs to be changes to laws which set out exactly what the sunset date actually means. And it's a fundamental right in a contract that when you pay deposit, you should have a time limit when things should be complete. We don't have that. I think in Queensland, there is actually legislated what the sunset date means, which is what normally people would consider the sunset date is when they can hand over the keys. So that might be something to look into. I think my, the dealing with the building commissioner, I think it should be really congratulated his work and his office work to help fix up defects, although I think there's definitely a lot of room to improve. Like, so we were not notified of the prohibition order, you know, even though it affects us considerably. I mean, we're the actual people who will be moving here, living here, but there was no notification given to us. The order was revoked and changed, but there's no, there's no reasons given why this happened. In fact, I had to submit a DIP request to actually get the official reasoning for why the order was actually revoked. There's no reasons why the Strata Plan was originally not allowed to be registered and then later on that was removed, but it was very unclear exactly why these decisions were made and they affected us greatly because our entire contract depends on these things. So I think purchases definitely need to be notified. And like, for example, when I called up Fair Trading to, I tend to understand what's actually going on. They gave me an email address, but the email address was actually just the vendor's email address. And they said, you know, you should talk to the vendor. They can let you know what Fair Trading is doing. And so I think, yeah, I would prefer to like talk to Fair Trading because we're dealing with this type of situation where we cannot exactly trust the vendor, to be honest. So I'd just like to reiterate like what the actual defects actually are in this place. I mean, it's quite serious. So there's no drainage facilities between the facade and wall. Waterproofing members on the cladding prevented any drainage. The actual building itself is not properly connected to the ground piers. The grout is not applied. There's no corrosion protection on the connections between the piers and the actual building themselves. Lightweight plasterboard walls, bulkhead ceilings are not compliant with the fire tests. They use non-compliant fire sealants throughout the building. The actual floor system is not installed in a compliant way. And I mean, the report clearly states that this can cause the destruction of the building. So I'm very happy that the building commissioner has found these defects. But I think the situation where they actually adjusted the order as really unfairly damaged the actual purchases. So even even with this order and if it's fixed, you know, the actual inspections are in November and December last year. So, I mean, there was a lot of construction happening before that. Kind of exactly be confident that there's not more issues. I mean, I would consider the nature of these issues negligent on the part of the builder. I mean, it's serious problems. So now I'm locked into the purchase. There's no guarantee when I can get possession. Some others in our situation have been trying to get loans. They cannot get a loan from the big four banks because it's public knowledge of the defects. So that's like our purchase situation. And as for the vendor, after the order has been changed, well, I mean, now they don't have a time limit to complete the building, they can take their time. All the purchasers are locked into a highly inflated price. I guess, of course, now if they were to attempt to sell it, it would be a lot less. To my knowledge, the vendor for the, for the actions has not needed to pay any fines and their reputational damage will be limited because they can, you know, the holding company can create a new company and that's no one will ever know about. So I don't think this situation is fair. You know, the purchases are taking all of the, all of the damage. And actually, the vendor really has not faced any consequences. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Burgess. I think we'll explore that in questions. Mr. Wang, you signed your contract five years ago now, is that right?
That's correct.
Yeah. And you still obviously don't have an apartment.
No, very far from it, I believe, very far.
Mr. Burgess, when did, how long, how long ago did you sign your contract?
It was mid 2016.
Okay.
2017.
So four, over four years ago?
Yeah.
And the the issue about the initial prohibition order that was issued by the building commissioner prohibited the registration of either a Strata Plan or the delivery of an occupation certificate is, was that the original prohibition order?
Yes, that's correct.
And then a matter of weeks after that, you found out there'd been an amended prohibition order issued by a senior officer at Fair Trading, which removed the prohibition on the registering of the Strata Plan, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
And do I, do I understand that both of your contracts had the sunset, had the sunset date tied to the registering of a Strata Plan in some way, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
And so if the, if a Strata Plan had been registered within that sunset period, then you were, you were caught in your contract and you couldn't, you couldn't get your deposit back, is that right?
That's right.
Yep. And indeed, that's what happened to both of you because the Strata Plan has now been registered and you're now caught in this contract. Four years for you, Mr. Burgess, five years for you, Mr. Wang, on a building which has innumerable defects. Is that the situation?
That's right. Because of the defects, obviously, we are now locked, caught in in this contract, of course. If the building was built properly, there were no problems, the Strata Plan. And if that was registered, that's obviously part of our contract and we would, we would be okay with that. Because the product is now, is not ready, it's not fit to sale, we feel this has been unfair for us.
Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, I mean, the Strata Plan was registered, but I mean, I didn't even know what a Strata Plan was until a month ago. Like, it doesn't have any relevance to the actual physical, I mean, the Strata Plan sets out like where the walls are, but it doesn't give me an apartment, you know? So I have, so I have a Strata Plan, great, but there's no apartment to show for it.
You can't live in a Strata Plan.
I'm sure not.
The, but when that amended prohibition order was being crafted, did Fair Trading reach out in any way or communicate with any of the purchasers? I mean, obviously you're going to be deeply affected by the change in the prohibition order. Did they tell you about it? When did you first hear about it?
I first heard about it very late, actually. I didn't, I, I just thought that the original plan, I mean, the original order was continuing and actually, it would be a few days before the sunset date. Actually, looked it up again and I realised, I hope there was a few newspaper articles and yeah, that's when I found out. So yeah, there was no communication between Fair Trading and the actual purchase.
Mr. Wang?
Yes, I personally was not contacted. I found out because we had a group of buyers in a, in like an online chat group. And there were particular buyers who have been active and proactive in chasing up the affairs and they, they told us and I found out through those meetings.
And when you then, I assume you then reached out to Fair Trading and said, you know, what on earth is going on here? What happened?
Yeah, I'll speak first, Patrick. I received after my first email to Fair Trading, I think after three weeks or so, they called back explaining the situation. It was, it was very, it was very general. It was, I can't remember the entire, the entire sentences or words used, but pretty much it was just to reiterate the process that happened and saying that the process is between me and the builder and Fair Trading is just the mitigator between, between these affairs, not, they don't act on our behalf, I think, in these regards.
Mr. Burgess?
Yeah, similar situation. I called them up and they basically said, like, I asked them why it was changed and, you know, why as on online, it doesn't say anything, it just has the new order. There's no mention that actually there was a previous order and they mentioned that anything was revoked. And they basically said, yeah, like, the contract is between myself and the builder and Fair Trading's job is just to like liaise with the builder. So, yeah, they basically said like, sorry, there's nothing we can tell you publicly.
I'll hand over to Ms. Hughes now for some questionings.
Thanks very much, Chair, and thank you very much, Mr. Wang and Mr. Burgess, for the challenges that you're facing, in particular, Mr. Burgess, that long list of defects that...
Courtney, you were coming through very quietly.
Is that, is that better now?
Yeah, significantly better.
Thanks very much. Sorry, I'll start again. So thanks very much, Mr. Wang and Mr. Burgess, for your testimony today, especially, I think, Mr. Burgess, where you've outlined exactly what is wrong with the building. You went to pretty extraordinary lengths to try and get some more information around the prohibition orders in lodging a GIPA to find out why. Can you just outline what that GIPA actually showed to you?
Yes, okay. And yeah, so I launched a GIPA request to Parramatta Council to try to find out why they were able to register their Strata Plan because the original conditions of consent, sorry, the original conditions of consent required the vendor to obtain a occupation certificate before the Strata Plan. So like, if that was to happen, then the sunset date would have operated as intended. It's like, after the sunset date, they can hand over the keys. So I was trying to find out why that happened. And I got a lot of documents. I got a letter from the compliance or the DA Assessment Officer. And she basically sent an email to Fair Trading confirming like, but the order had been changed. And so she basically says, this is quoting, she's quoting Mr. Frank Sata. So she says, the developer's planner has mentioned, the developer's planner, Mr. Frank Sata, has mentioned that the building commissioner has agreed to vary his prohibition order to allow the subdivision process to proceed and the order will simply apply to the occupancy certificate and will be lifted when the commissioner is satisfied that the works have been completed. This is expected to occur in the next month or so. Yeah, so that was what she heard. And so I suppose that's from the developer's planner who, it's like the, I suppose the previous planning minister a couple of years ago, 15 years ago. Yeah, and so I also obtained from that GIPA request just the actual order revoking the first prohibition order. And...
Thanks. Oh, sorry, Mr. Burgess?
Oh, no, that's, that's related.
So both you and Mr. Wang are obviously potential buyers or you've signed on. You've kind of come together in a collective arrangement, but that's not been facilitated by Fair Trading or by the owners or by the, by the vendor, I should say. You guys have out of desperation sort of come together, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's so to say.
That's correct.
And can I just ask you both, you've both, obviously, as we said, as the chair covered, four years ago, five years ago, signed a contract. This is your major financial investment that you've made, you're, in terms of what you're purchasing, is that correct?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's a, it's a apartment, it's a big deal, it's a lot of money. Yeah.
So can I just ask you, I mean, Mr. Wang, thank you for your submission. We've now received that. You've outlined that you no longer want to purchase in this building, is that correct?
No, definitely not, especially with how the proceedings have followed through. There's no trust from myself to the developer and their actions. It shows that they definitely don't have our best interests at heart.
And Mr. Burgess, you're in the same situation, you no longer actually want to purchase the unit, but you're being forced to because this clause has been enacted?
Yeah, definitely. If, if I was able to rescind, I would definitely rescind, yeah. Because, I mean, there's so many defects. Yeah, there's absolutely no trust. I mean, the vendor's actions have really shown contempt to the people of New South Wales, really. I mean, there's so many issues, it's insulting. You know, they tried to, you know, just hand us off a dangerous building and, you know, this, that building is going to sit there for the next 50 years. Who knows what's going to happen? All the, all the people in the, who live there in the future are at risk. So, yeah, I would definitely not want to live here.
And as you said, Mr. Burgess, there's a very personal financial risk here. Mr. Wang, you actually outlining your submission that your loan wasn't approved by one of the four banks because of these defects. Can you just explain, explain how that happened for us?
Ah, yes. My broker on her submission of my home loan to one of the banks, it came through where because of the defects, the valuation of the property was changed and then the line was, was not able to be approved.
So you had to source alternative financing, is that right? Like, you had to find another home loan?
Because of the time, because of the time period, we didn't, because of when we found out what, when the, when the home loan was submitted and the date until the sunset was emerging, there wasn't enough time to go and find a new bank and submit a new home loan.
That's pretty extraordinary lengths. Look, thank you very much for your time. I'll hand back to the chair.
Mr. Carter?
Thank you. Could I, could I just start by saying to both of you how concerned I am by your story and concerned that you're trapped into this situation? So anything that I ask you from this state, point on, rest assured, I'm very sympathetic to your position. But can I just go back a little bit earlier and I'll start with Mr. Wang, but I'm, then throw to you, Mr. Burgess, as well. When, when you originally went to, or when you considered purchasing a unit in this development, do I take it that you visited a site where there was a display unit or the like that you were able to inspect? Mr. Wang?
Yes, I, my memory fails me a little bit because it was some time ago, but I do, but we did go to a particular, we did go to a place where we made this, you know, the signings for different meetings and we could see different outlines of the place, but I can't, I really can't remember, we could see the entire, like, the whole room, et cetera, the whole design.
Mr. Burgess, how did you go about it?
Yeah, I don't remember there being like a display home or display unit. Yeah, it was basically just, you know, there was a lot of information and brochures and photographs and, I mean, it's, it seemed like a pretty good place.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, again, I'm not being critical, but the next question is this. Did you retain a solicitor or conveyancer for the purposes of getting advice on what you were signing up to? And I say this from the point of view of being an old solicitor. So that defines some of the way I look at this. But did you, do you actually get some independent advice as to what you're actually putting your moniker on? Mr. Wang?
So I didn't have an independent source. So I didn't have an independent, um, source. Um, the lawyer, the, the lawyer of a solicitor we used was, um, was very, I, I believe recommended by the developer.
I thought that might be the case.
That's, yeah, but, but it wasn't like, no, I, I didn't find an independent, like, I guess, maybe I could say I was naive at the time and I believe that, you know, everything was fine.
I'm not being critical. I, I am genuinely not being critical.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Mr Burgess, how did you go?
Um, yeah, similar situation. The, yeah, the, the lawyer was, um, either like recommended by the, uh, uh, the real estate agent or the vendor or one of them. And, uh, yeah, so I mean, we looked for the contract and they sort of gave the A O K. And, um, yeah, went from that. Actually, I, we, yeah, I think we might have had the same solicitor actually who was speaking.
I suspect you did.
Yes.
I suspect you did. So, see, one of the things that interests me in these circumstances, again, I, I have to say, like, we're getting back to twenty years since I did any conveyancing, but normally the contracts provided, provide normally on their front cover, or they used to provide a completion date, and then you'd have a whole pile of special conditions inside that developers had inserted that had given them the ability to settle the unknown future dates on your, on your purchase. Is that what we're confronted with here? Essentially, uh, the, the contract that you signed under the advice of a solicitor that may have been associated with the developer, um, actually gave the developer carte blanche as to when they had to complete this building by. Mr Wang?
Um, I can't say for sure if that's the case. All I can really come from is that, um, I only knew of the sunset date clause, um, which was initially, I think in twenty twenty. Um, it's been pushed back to its maximum date of three hundred and sixty-five days. Um, but in terms of the finer details, I really, really not too sure.
Mr Burgess?
Um, yeah, I think the, I mean, on, obviously back in two thousand seventeen, um, it didn't mean much to me, I suppose. I'm, that's probably my own fault. Um, but yeah, the completion.
Not being critical.
Oh, no, no, that's all right. Um, the completion date, like in the contract is, um, uh, the later of the two of the, um, notice of registration of the starter plan.
Yeah.
Or the notice of the issue of the occupancy certificate. And so like notice is the important keyword that figures they've registered this starter plan. Um, the vendor's solicitor sent us, sent everybody an email saying like, oh, we've registered the starter plan, but just note like this is not a notice. We're just letting you know, but it's not a notice. So that doesn't, um, trigger any completion date on their part, they claim.
All right. All right. Well, before I move on, um, and I don't really care if it's one or both of you, but would one of you be able to provide us with a copy of your contract?
Sure. Yeah, no problem.
Mr Wang or Mr Burgess? It, it just would be of interest to see what you got signed up to here, because I suspect that the problem that you faced with your unit is a recurring issue in people who are buying off the plan. So your, your contract may well be helpful in informing us as to, uh, what, what we should be looking at and what the committee should be recommending. Now, Mr Burgess, could I ask you, the, the, uh, the GIPA that you, uh, uh, that you undertook, um, how many pages is it? Because I'm going to ask you if it's not too many. Maybe you could give us either the whole of it or the relevant parts.
Um, yeah, it's quite a lot. Um, I mean, most of the actual contents are just, um, fairly, you know, purely like, um, development requests. Um, but yeah, of course, I, I will be happy to, um, uh, send them all to the committee.
Well, well, again, uh, I can tell you, you, you're reasonably skilled at this. Can I invite you to cull out what you don't think is helpful and send us the, the salient documents? Is that possible?
That's certainly possible.
Right, good. Well, all right. Well, I don't want to hug, hog, hog the limelight. So my final question is this. Have you had any correspondence from, um, fair trading regarding your circumstances? Mr Wang?
Um, yes, they contacted me after I sent an email, I'm reaching out. And we had a phone discussion about, um, what was happening. But apart from that, um, callback, no, I, there hasn't been.
Nothing in writing?
In writing, uh, there was an email confirming, uh, um, our conversation that we had, et cetera. But, um, apart from that specific conversation, there hasn't been anything else.
Right. And Mr Burgess, how about you?
Uh, no, I haven't received any, um, correspondence on fair trading.
Right, thank you. Mr Wang, would you be able to provide us with a copy of that very helpful email solo that you received from fair trading?
I can.
Thank you. I'll acquiesce at this stage.
Mr Khan's obviously missing those days of trawling through contracts, um, in his office in Tampa, so.
It's why I went back to doing P C A, please. It was far easier.
Um, are there any other members of the committee, um, who have some questions at the moment?
Yes, I'd like to ask some questions, Mr Shubrich. Thank you, uh, uh, Mr Burgess and Mr Wang for your evidence. Uh, it's a, it's an extraordinary story. Look, I wanted to just get some clarity about a couple of details. So the first thing is, exchange hasn't occurred. So there hasn't been settlement, has there? No, it's, so at this stage, the, so technically you're not actually the owners of the properties yet. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Yes, so, uh, fair trading wouldn't necessarily know the extent of who actually owns properties in the building. Is that right?
Um, I, uh, I, I think possibly, but also, um, they, they definitely would know because, um, I think one of the reasons that the prohibition order was revised is because, I mean, it's evident that the developer, um, or the building commissioner or fair trading, that, you know, if, if they didn't get their starter plan, there was going to be a lot of people, um, missing it. So I think, I mean, there must have been at least that knowledge that, um, there were a lot of contracts that are at risk. Yeah.
So in the documentation that you acquired through your GIPA, so was there any, fair trading didn't offer any specific explanation for the decision? Was, was there a, the formal, uh, reasoning or rationale provided in terms of the decision to, uh, to register the strata plan?
Um, do you, do you mean, um, do you mean to change the order or for them to?
Um, to actually just, to register the plan.
Oh, so, um, I mean, no, there was, I didn't see anything. I, I sent a, um, GIPA request to Parramatta Council. So I didn't actually have, I mean, at fair trading, um, would have more information. So I still don't know that, although, um, there was a, a, a letter, um, I've seen that basically outlined the reasons for that. And it's mostly to do with the fact that the, the new laws are not necessarily to protect purchases. They're really to just improve the overall quality of buildings and the perception of quality.
I see. So can you just clarify for me? So you, you, you lodged the GIPA with Parramatta Council. Uh, and so in terms of the arrangement, the development con- condition was that, uh, they couldn't lodge the strata plan until they had an occupation certificate. And that, that Parramatta Council is the one that changed that condition. Is that, that your understanding of the process? It's Parramatta Council that made the decision to say, no, we're not going to insist on the development, uh, on the occupation certificate, uh, before the strata plan can be registered?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. So that was one of the conditions of consent. Um, they need to, um, get the occupation certificate before the starter plan could be, uh, registered. Uh, sorry, not the starter plan. Actually, it's before the strata certificate, um, which is another prerequisite for the starter plan um, can be obtained. Um, and.
Sorry, you go on.
Oh, yeah, so, um, and, uh, yeah, the developer, so I think, um, on first of July, the prohibition order was, um, issued, the original one. And then on, uh, the, um, the sixth of July, I believe, um, then they lodged a request to Parramatta Council to change their consent requirements to allow them to obtain the strata certificate. Um, and then about a month later, um, that's, um, allowed. And that was the email that I was talking about earlier, um, just requesting like, um, that if, if, if they actually allow this, it's not going to like, um, interfere with the fair trading's, uh, prohibition order.
And so what was the rationale that was provided by Parramatta Council?
Uh, yeah, um, so they, they, um, they quoted a, there was a court case, um, a few years ago. Um, that, uh, like the developer took, um, I, I can't remember what council it was, but it took it to court to basically, um, allow them to get the, uh, strata plan before the occupation certificate. And, um, that went all the way, I think to the Supreme Court and, um, and in the end they allowed it. Um, and so basically Parramatta Council used that. They said, oh, so there's been a court case. It's like there's precedent for this. So that's fine. What is, we'll allow you to do that. Um, but like I, I looked on that, at that court case and the actual like reason, it's a very different situation. Like there was, it actually was reasonable that they might be able to, um, get the starter plan before the occupation certificate. Um, but like this case was totally different. Um, so, but that was the, uh, reasoning they used.
And in the documentation that was provided in your GIPA, uh, is the representations made by the vendor included in that documentation?
Um, no, so actually I, I couldn't find anything, um, actually like the reasoning with their, their request. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Mr Wang, what has this meant for you personally over the last five years in terms of, you know, your plans for your own financial future or, or, you know, your own personal future? What's it meant?
Um, at the moment, I guess it means, um, uncertainty, uncertainty in where, um, where the future really lies because, um, we've been now, all we can really do is just wait until the developer, um, I guess, issues the occupation certificate and, um, we have to move in. That's how I feel. If, um, what, what, like all the things that we can do. And, but what I'm worried about is, um, we're watching the news, seeing different things that are arising. Buildings are fixed, the contracts are signed, the people move in, and then the problems come back. It's, these are the things that I'm worried about. It's, of course, if they fix the building and everything's okay, we're, we are obliged to, to move in. But it's these problems that might arise afterwards that really affect
Hmm.
my thoughts.
And, and it's, it's you and your family. This was going to be your family's home. Was that the plan, Mr Wang?
Um, for one, it was, it was for myself and also for my father. We, we both, um, bought, um, apartments in this place. So we have to, um.
So, so your family's been hit by this doubly?
That's correct, yes, yes.
Mr Burgess, how's, how's that impacted upon you this last four years? Apart from your rapid understanding of construction and finance law? Um, how has it impacted upon you?
Yeah, well, it's, it's pretty sad, really. I mean, like, we're hoping to have a place. Um, but, I mean, so now if we move in, it's, there's, there's just always, this is just going to hang over us, I think. Um, because, I mean, the, yeah, the, the defects, um, they might be fixed. They, I can't be sure, I suppose. So it's, it's always just going to be, I mean, like, doesn't matter what we do in the future. Um, yeah, I think this is, the building is, uh, I mean, it's, uh, it has issues and, um, yeah.
It, it feels like moving in with a ticking time bomb somewhere in this apartment block. Is, would that be a fair summary?
Uh, yeah, I think so. Um, yeah, we just don't know. I mean, I think just also just the knowledge that the, the developer has, you know, tried to use, um, whatever means possible to, you know, force us to settle this place. And, um, they don't seem to have any real care for the actual health and safety of the people they're selling it to. So it's.
Can I ask you about you, when you approached fair trading, they, they, were both of you told it's not their business to help you out as purchasers? And if you had a problem with the contract, to go back and talk to the developer, was that, is that a fair summary of what your engagement with fair trading was, Mr Wang?
Um, in, in some lights, um, not, not, not entirely. Like I didn't have those, those exact kind of, you know, words or, um, but that's how I felt. It's, I, I had a courtesy call explaining my situation, but to seek further matters, I had to find a lawyer and to contact the developer, um, personally.
Um, Mr Burgess?
I'm sorry, what was your question again? Uh, sorry.
In terms of when you reached out to fair trading, initially for an explanation about why they changed the prohibition order and had you trapped in the contract, um, wh- what did you get from fair trading?
Uh, um, not much. Um, because I heard, um, in, in the newspaper articles I read, um, they basically said that fair trading was looking over some contracts for purchases. Um, so I called them up and asked if they could have a look at my contract, see if there's any issues. Um, but they basically said, no, actually, we can't do that. That's a legal issue. And, and they, sorry, uh, they gave me a email address, but it was just the email of the vendor. So, um, I don't really want to talk to the vendor about the vendor's problems. Um, yeah, so that was not very useful, I think.
Hmm. And in terms of, did you reach out to the building commissioner, um, who'd issued the initial prohibition order, the one that actually protected you? Did you get any response? Any contact with the building commissioner?
Um, I, 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 um, have not emailed or contacted the building commissioner.
Mr Burgess?
Um, I was trying to, but I couldn't find any contact details. Um, yeah, the, like, Mr David Chandler doesn't have a, there's no like email of them. Um, I think it's, I suppose, because it's all under the, um, Department of Customer Service. Perhaps I need to contact them.
Yeah, well, I, I suppose for full disclosure here, I think myself and Ms Usos have both been contacted by, um, a number of building owners in this. And I know myself, I've communicated and had correspondence with the building commissioner and the assistance of the committee. I will table that correspondence as soon as I can get it to you. Um, and in the end, the building commissioner said it was really ultimately a matter for fair trading, having amended it. Um, um, Ms Usos?
Thanks very much, uh, Chair. Um, Mr Wang, Mr Burgess, some, in some other buildings that we've seen that have faced similar problems to your own, what the building commissioner has done or the New South York government has done is stepped in and got a fund that is going to be there to, um, fix future defects. Would that address your concerns? Would that be enough to, um, get you to, to sort of happily, uh, move into a building? Or is there just nothing that can be done? You just simply want to start afresh with a new building, um, and, and, and sort of go forward with your lives? Mr Wang, perhaps you first?
Um, no, definitely. If there's, if there's, um, things in place to protect us, to support us, then I'm more than happy to continue with, with the, um, with, with, with the, the building and, um, and move in definitely. It's not a personal.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I mean, it's not a, a personal, like, attack or a vendetta against the developer. It's more of the product. It's more of the safety concerns. Um, if that encompasses this whole, this whole thing. So if they fix everything, if we receive your insurances and securities, then, then definitely, personally, I think that's, that's fine.
And have you had, sorry, Mr Burgess, before I go to you, Mr Wang, have you had any correspondence from your bank or anyone else who's actually asked you for that kind of surety or that kind of, um, that, that, that effects will be fixed?
Um, sorry, I, I don't entirely understand. Could you repeat that, please?
Um, yeah, so, sorry. So, um, I just wanted to see if the bank has asked for, or your financial institution has asked for any kind of surety that the defects. has asked for any kind of surety that the defects will actually be fixed, or whether that, whether they haven't asked about that at all?
No, no, because um it was more of, they were contacting my 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 mortgage broker. So once that um kind of deal um went sour, that was the end of that um of that application from my side.
Yeah, I understand. Thanks, Mr. Wang. Uh, Mr. Burgess, so is there anything that can be done to sort of address the defects? Or do you just want to kind of move on with a new, with a new apartment if that was possible?
Um yeah, definitely. Um I would prefer to move on to a new apartment, um if it's possible. Um but that doesn't seem that likely at this stage, unfortunately. Um I suppose like if, I I think uh it seems like though, a lot of situations before this have occurred, after everybody's already moved in, they're already living there. So like assurances and that would definitely help a lot, I suppose, like in in my situation, haven't moved in yet, haven't actually settled. So I mean, I mean, I did everything um to avoid that, I suppose, because I don't really want to live there. Um yeah. So I suppose we're in the situation, we haven't actually fully completed the contract. So um yeah, definitely afterwards, if 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 we've already moved in for a few years, yeah, that'll definitely be awesome. And then having a assurance, that'll be good. But I I think maybe that's happening. I think there's some type of thing. The developer needs to pay three percent or something to the council, might be.
Miss, miss, yeah, Mr. Burgess and Mr. Wang, sorry, Ms. Huesos. Do I understand the building commissioner is in the process of negotiating some kind of financial security for you along the lines of a bank guarantee or similar, so that there will be some money set aside to it to meet at least a some of the future defects? Is is that the process that's being undertaken?
I am not aware of that, anything official. I think that was um mentioned um in a a newspaper article, but I haven't heard any.
Mr. Wang?
Yeah, um same with me. I'm not too sure.
You've seen some media reporting that suggested this, but nothing in writing, nothing officially having come to either of you was with, is that the state of play?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, Ms. Huesos, does that, I'll hand back to you.
That answers my question. I mean, the the, sorry, just to be clear, they haven't communicated that this potential negotiation for a fund hasn't been communicated with the owners that you're aware of?
Yeah, no, it has not been.
That's right.
We we haven't, I mean, I haven't personally had any contact with um Fair Trading or the building commissioner. It seems like all the um negotiations happening with the developer.
All right.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Ms. Huesos. Do any other members of the committee have any further questions? No. Um, Mr. Wang and Mr. Burgess, that doesn't indicate that the committee is not deeply interested and concerned. Just, I think, says you've told your story very clearly and plainly. And I think you have our collective well wishes. And um your evidence will be very important to us as we formulate recommendations about what needs to be done. Um I personally can't believe we have laws in New South Wales that allow these contracts to just go on and on and on and on and leave you with so much uncertainty in your lives. I'm sure it's a matter that all of us will consider closely. Um, so um that concludes this um um the the first witness panel. We will have a short recess and we will resume at ten fifty AM when we will be hearing from local government New South Wales, um as well as representatives from Randwick and Sydney Council. And I would encourage all members um to place their um device on mute and to turn off the video. And um we will recommence the public hearing at ten fifty. Thanks very much. Um, so if members are ready and if our witnesses are ready, I might just treat this as resuming. Um welcome back to the next panel of the Public Accountability Committee's hearing into the building regulation. Some might say the lack of it, um in New South Wales. We're lucky to have three witnesses from the local government sector who have intimate knowledge of the issues from a local government perspective. Um we have councillor Linda Scott, who's the president of Local Government New South Wales. Mr. Roman Werosinski, the manager of Health, Building and Regulatory Services at Randwick Council. And Mr. Andrew Thomas, who's the executive manager, planning and development for the City of Sydney Council. I'd like to welcome all three of the witnesses to the hearing. Each of your organisations has provided um submissions, which we have all digested. Um and I might ask each of you, um in the order in which I I just introduced you, to give your name, your title, and then take either an author and affirmation. Councillor Scott?
Thanks. Um, Mr. Shubridge, so Linda Scott, I'm a councillor on the City of Sydney, about appear today in my capacity as the president of Local Government New South Wales. Uh and I'm taking the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, councillor Scott. And I'll just indicate to everybody, we are thinking we are live again. So that you you broke the hoodoo, councillor Scott. So thanks very much. Um, Mr. Werosinski?
Um, yep, my name is Roman Farisinski. I'm the manager of Health, Building and Regulatory Services at Randwick City Council. Um I'm happy to take the oath and I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thanks very much, Mr. Werosinski. Mr. Thomas?
Um my name is Andrew Thomas. I'm the executive manager of Planning and Development at the City of Sydney Council. And I'll take the affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Um again, thank you very much for your attendance and your submissions. The opportunity is, if you wish to avail it, is to give a brief opening statement. And I might go in the same order in which you got someone in, councillor Scott.
Thank you. And thank you in particular to the committee for the opportunity to appear today. I take the opportunity to acknowledge that I'm at home. And so I pay my respects to the um Gadigal people of the Eora nation. Local Government New South Wales has, of course, long advocated for stronger regulation of building and construction for many, many years. Our position on the need for safe and quality buildings has been well documented. As an example, in the last ten years, we've made our concerns nine in nine less than seventeen submissions, including two submissions to this committee's initial inquiry in two thousand and ninety. I'd like to state for the record that Local Government New South Wales and our council members have strongly welcomed the building regulation reforms and greater attention on these issues. And particularly under the direction of the New South Wales Building Commissioner, David Chandler. Secondly, while we acknowledge that the initial focus has been on tighter regulation for residential apartments or class two buildings, our firm view is that the reforms must continue and broaden to capture other building types into the future. A long-held dissatisfaction with the uh probity concerns of the private certification system and the perceived conflicts of interest remain within the sector. Indeed, only last week, I continued to have residents in my own area, the City of Sydney, contacting me with concerns about purchasing in a new building in the city because of these very issues. These concerns extend to all building types, not just residential apartment buildings. And more needs to be done to address these very significant concerns. Many councils also think that regulations around asbestos management by certifiers could be strengthened to ensure safe and legal disposal. Local Government New South Wales, therefore, asks the committee to support our calls for a commitment from the New South Wales Government to an ongoing programme that will continue the work begun by the building commissioner and his team and assure we have a strong and permanent building regulator. Councils are extremely disappointed that the government is asking us to carry out an ever-expanding list of compliance work while at the same time removing the capacity for us to help fund the cost of these activities. Ensuring that our planning and building laws are not violated and appropriate sanctions are made against those who do the wrong thing, who breach the law are of course a crucial part of rebuilding public confidence in the strength and safety of all our buildings in New South Wales. Local governments have a key role to play here. The New South Wales Government's recently enacted regulation changes prevent councils from recouping some of the cost of our compliance activities. We're baffled by this regulatory change, which came at the same time as the government introduced its own levy on developers to support the state's compliance activities. We therefore respectfully ask the committee to support our calls for a compliance levy to be introduced to support our expanding compliance responsibilities. On combustible cladding, we acknowledge the government's project remediate programme. But resourcing this work is a challenge for councils. And I also note it is a significant challenge for the many stratas faced with this unexpected and surprise cost. We ask the committee to support our calls for the New South Wales Government to commit additional funds to support the significant cost on residents and councils. We know in other jurisdictions such as Victoria, this has been extremely successful. Finally, in closing, I'd like to reiterate that Local Government New South Wales remains opposed to the widespread expansion of the statewide compliant development pathways. We ask the committee to recommend that the government ceases these expansive changes to pathways and limits exempted compliant development to low-risk or low-impact development. We know this carries a significant risk of problematic development occurring, not just uh for a range of reasons of our overdevelopment and poor quality development, but particularly from a compliance perspective. Thank you.
Thanks so much, councillor Scott. Lots to unpackage there. Um, uh, Mr. Werosinski?
Uh, Mr. Chair, deputy chair, committee members, thank you for the opportunity to appear before this hearing. Um firstly, I'd like to acknowledge the work that has been undertaken uh by the building commissioner and his team in addressing substandard building work in class two developments, and also the work through project remediate. Um however, councils have been left to um deal with uh most of the buildings with non-compliant cladding in the absence of any clear and consistent criteria, without any assistance or funding. Non-compliant buildings, non-compliant high-rise buildings also only represent a small percentage of buildings on the New South Wales Cladding Register. And again, councils have been left to deal with these buildings as they consider or may be necessary to do so. Overall, the level of support given to local government to deal with this issue has been insufficient. And councils should be given funding to deal with all of the buildings on the cladding register. In relation to building certification, there have been many changes in the past two decades which have provided for incremental improvements, but they have significantly added to the level of complexity. Building certification process is entangled with the equally, if not more complex, um New South Wales planning system. An example of which is the compliant development pathway. The extent, type and scale of development which can now be carried out as compliant development is substantial and excessive. And in most cases is approved by the same entity, uh which in most cases, again, is a private certifier. Compliant development should be restricted or limited to low-impact development, which doesn't impact unreasonably on local, local areas. Otherwise, it should be subject to a full planning assessment against local planning controls. Councils are also required to intervene in non-compliant development in which a private certifier is the appointed principal certifier. Unfortunately, certifiers are very slow to respond to resident complaints. And they appear in many cases to be reluctant to issue any written directions to remedy the breaches. Unfortunately, this often results in the resident complaints being directed to council in the first instance. And council officers are required to investigate and resolve these matters, which sort of defeats the purpose and provisions and responsibilities of the certifier. If councils are required to intervene in privately certified development, it should be on a full cost recovery basis. Whilst the legislation provides provisions for cost compliance notices, the provisions are so complex, they are, that they are unworkable. And councils also become increasingly involved in the remedy of non-compliant building work through what's known as the building information certificate process. However, these fees are prescribed and do not cover the actual costs associated with these services. And councils are likely to see an increase in these types of applications to remedy non-compliant building work as a result of a recent court case in Keringai Council versus Biaozhou Proprietary Limited. Adecuate and workable cost recovery mechanisms are required for council to recoup the significant costs associated with compliance investigations and the remedy of non-compliant development. Ratepayers should not have to foot the bill to correct the indiscretions or incompetence of builders, developers or other parties. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Mr. Werosinski. Mr. Thomas?
Just to to briefly point to a a couple of um key points in the city submission that go to the costs. Um there's some detail in our submission about the additional resources that the city is dedicated to uh addressing this cladding issue and also the legal costs associated with one appeal that we're currently um uh fighting with a a proponent. Um I I might just leave it at that. So um many of the points made by my colleagues uh have already been addressed um in my submission. So I I'd perhaps default to you, Chair, to questions.
Um, thanks, Mr. Thomas. And and given the time, I think, a very sensible way forward. And we have read your submission. Um, I I might just ask one or two questions, then I'll hand over it to Ms. Huesos. Could I ask, first of all, the the government has recently issued a a fresh regulation which actually restricts the ability of councils to recover compliance costs from developers. Now, do any of you want to speak to that? No, councillor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Shubridge. As you can imagine, this is a very significant concern for all local governments. And I note that today we're represented mostly by people uh from metropolitan councils. But of course, this is a very significant issue also for regional and remote councils, particularly given the budget pressures that they face. Uh we understand and respect that the New South Wales Government relies on local governments to carry out an ever-expanding list of compliance work. Uh and as has been rightly pointed out, communities often also uh understand that councils will do this work and come to us to raise concerns and seek advice before investing in property. Uh but this removal by regulation of councils' ability to collect revenue to cover the costs of this work has of course removed our capacity to fund these activities. Our council compliance officers undertake the important task of educating communities, ensuring developers meet their environmental and building standard obligations and protecting health and safety. The regulatory changes will mean that councils have to forego jobs, frontline jobs. It will threaten councils' ability to be able to fulfil our compliance responsibilities by reducing the number of local government staff who are going to be cracking down on dodgy building work and to rub salt in the wound. It is of course the case that the state government has introduced a compliance levy of its own to allow it to fund regulatory work, but it is of a different nature. Let's be clear, this is not one level of government taking responsibility. It is one level of government taking a levy to uh do their own compliance work that is materially different from the work of councils uh but not allowing councils to also collect this levy. This is a significant threat uh to the ability of New South Wales residents to have confidence in their buildings.
Um, does City of Sydney and then Randwick have any contribution on this?
I don't have anything to add, Chair, to to um councillor Scott's statement.
But do you support the position, do you support the position of councillor Scott?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, could I ask you about um flammable cladding in particular? Um um maybe I'll go to to either to Randwick or City of Sydney to to talk about what's, what does it mean practically? You've got a building with flammable cladding on it. It's not part of project remediate, or it doesn't want to be part of project remediate. What's what's council's role? What's happening on the ground?
Perhaps if I I um open, Chair. Uh we have at the city a team of three to four building surveyors who um have the responsibility for investigating a uh a large list, if you like, of um buildings that have been identified with flammable cladding. They're identified um or or come to us in a number of ways, uh either through fire and rescue New South Wales or through um buildings nominating themselves or through our own investigations. Perhaps we might get a development application, for example, to to replace the cladding. Uh we then work through those buildings and prioritise. We then work through those buildings and prioritise those and direct our resources towards resolving them. And we make a technical assessment of perhaps the actual nature of the cladding. For example, how much PPE is actually made up in that cladding material? What is the extent of the cladding on the building? And often we direct the building owners to fund the work to investigate the actual nature of the cladding materials, actually, what is it made up of? Then we would work with the building owner to either remove the cladding or put in a, like a rectification kind of strategy to address the risk posed by the cladding that's on the building.
Thanks, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Worosinski?
Likewise, I guess it's a similar process at Randwick. Fortunately, we don't have anywhere near as many buildings as in view to the City of Sydney. But the same principle, whilst council only has around about 74 buildings on the Cladding Register, unfortunately, only nine or so that were classed as high-risk. So we've been going through them in a similar process, working with the owners of those buildings or the managers of those buildings, to, I guess, come up with an agreeable upgrading strategy. In many cases, that will result in replacement over a period of a number of years, in most cases, or the replacement of the cladding. In some cases, the extent of cladding may not be that significant, and it may be able to be dealt with or assessed through a performance solution report prepared by fire safety engineers. And so it depends on the extent of the cladding and the percentage of combustibility of that cladding. We, in relation to the buildings on the Cladding Register, we are progressively going through those on a risk basis. And we are requiring those buildings to be upgraded if we deem the risk to be unacceptable. Following the same principles, we, you know, try to work with the owners of the buildings and their advisers. In some cases, we follow with the issue of fire safety notices and orders, although that is not, I guess, a preferred approach, but that is a tool that we use if we have to.
Thanks, Mr. Worosinski. Did you say there are 74 properties that are on your list in Randwick?
Correct.
How many in the City of Sydney, Mr. Thomas?
509 at the moment.
Of those 509, how many are in the Project Remediate pipeline?
To date, we have 18. We estimate that about 72 would be eligible for Project Remediate.
But overwhelmingly, they're not in the Project Remediate bucket with the...
Correct. That's correct.
What about at Randwick?
The, out of the nine high-risk buildings in Randwick, fortunately, they're not Class Two buildings. We only have one that is, we're looking at Project Remediate for. Most of the buildings in Randwick are of a different building classification, of which are hospital-related buildings or university-type buildings.
So, to be clear, Project Remediate only applies to Class Two buildings, which are multi-story apartment blocks, or is that correct?
Correct.
Could I ask you, in terms of, what are the standards you look to then? You've got, say, a hospital, or you have a shopping complex, a retail complex. What are the standards you're looking to when you're working with those owners to replace the cladding? Are there a clear set of standards that you can refer to, given to you by the state government?
Perhaps if I...
Mr. Thomas?
In short, no, there are not. Essentially, it is a risk assessment carried out by our very experienced and very competent building surveying staff. However, they are required to make an assessment on an individual building-by-building case.
That sounds hugely resource-intensive, Mr. Thomas.
It is, and it's not just for councils. This requires many, the building owners to carry out quite technical and extensive investigations of their buildings. And it is a costly and timely, time-consuming process for the building owners.
I might go to you, Mr. Worosinski, to give us the response from a Randwick level about, you know, how it's working in practice. And then I might ask councillor Scott to give a sort of statewide perspective, if possible. Mr. Worosinski?
As mentioned by Andrew, the actual criteria, I guess, there is no specific criteria to be met. It's not quite that simple. So it is a risk assessment carried out on an individual basis. And it does involve, obviously, I guess, a lot of assessment from very experienced officers. In our case, we've got a number of experienced building surveyors at Randwick City Council, fortunately. However, we do have regard to the reports provided by the owners of the building from their fire safety engineers, and we would certainly be looking at those very, very closely. In some cases, it may necessitate a peer review because it's obviously a complex issue. And obviously, we would want to get it right and come up with an assessment that is is appropriately addressing the risk associated with the cladding on a particular building. In some cases, it may be of a limited nature and not represent a significant risk, depending on the location and extent of the cladding on the building. But if you have a full building with non-compliant cladding with more than 30% combustible, then you probably need to seriously look at removal of that cladding.
Yeah, sorry, Mr. Thomas, if you want to add something for clarity, and then we'll go to councillor Scott.
I just might add, there's an example in our submission which goes to a, which goes to the standards and the risk assessment by council staff. So an existing residential building made up of five different buildings has the flammable cladding with a greater than 30% biomass of polyethylene. So it's a banned building product under the standards, the national building standards. Now, we issued a notice to remove all of that cladding. The building owners sought advice from a fire engineer who sought to challenge council's position. And they suggested that a patchwork approach where you take some panels off, replace them with a non-flammable, considered non-flammable product, but you leave a substantial amount of the banned building product in place. Now, our risk assessment was we didn't accept that fire engineer's position, and that our notice was appealed by the building owner in the Land and Environment Court. Now, that first hearing, if you like, council's position was agreed to, but we have got notice that the, that decision is being appealed. So it makes no sense that we have a national building standard that says you can't use these products in buildings anymore, but we still got industry advising building owners that some of this banned product can stay in place. So we have costs and time that have been borne by building owners to sort of perpetuate this situation. The key issue is that flammable banned building product is still existing on those five buildings today.
Sounds like a god-awful mess, still more than four years after Grenfell, I'll be quite frank. Councillor Scott, what's it like across the rest of the state?
I think it's true to say that the examples you've seen here are not isolated examples. They're extremely representative of the experience of councils across the state. Obviously, because of the higher number of dwellings in metropolitan councils, there's a higher incidence, and you can see extremely high numbers, over 500 here in the City of Sydney. But it is the case that local government New South Wales is hearing examples from Wurongong, Port Stephens, Sutherland, right across the state, in many different areas of these kinds of examples. And I might just highlight, because, again, they're not examples we've discussed today, but in the case of the compliance activities, other councils are citing significant revenue losses. So, for example, in the City of Rye, an estimated $1.3 million loss as a result of the compliance levy, $500,000 to Ballina Shire, $700,000 loss to Walidili Shire, $300,000 loss to Lizmore Shire, and $260,000 loss to Tweed Council. All these losses are estimated to arise as a result of this regulatory change, removing council's ability to levy all this compliance work. And of course, this is overlaid, as you've heard, with legal costs that councils feel they have a public duty to pursue when you have stratas or other differing opinions that come in that allow building owners to retain what we know are unsafe building materials in their buildings. Now, this is a public fight that needs to be had, but unfortunately, it's extremely expensive. But councils feel the need to do it to uphold public safety and protect people.
Ms. Housos?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you to all of our panellists for your time and for your really informative questions. Can I start with you, councillor Scott? We compare this approach in New South Wales, piecemeal by piecemeal, council by council, with the Victorian approach, which centrally set a standard, then put a significant amount of money to, towards, $600 million, towards actually removing the flammable cladding from residential apartment buildings and government buildings. They're well down the track of removing it. And in New South Wales, we compare that with a system where it sounds as though councils are fighting it out with building owners to see as to whether they even need to remove it. What's your take on this situation? What would have been the best approach?
There's no doubt that the Victorian approach that had serious standards and allowed funding to be allocated to support building owners to undertake remediation has led to better outcomes. It's very clear, when you look to the Victorian example, that their approach has been far more successful than the approach taken here in New South Wales. That is not to say, of course, that the work of the New South Wales Building Commissioner has been unsuccessful. It has been a great step forward. It has been something that we really celebrate, and we in particular call out and congratulate David Chandler for his work in that role. But the fact is that it is a commission that is not resourced enough. It is not able to take steps forward on buildings that are not Class Two buildings. And that is, as you've heard from the councils today, in many cases, the vast majority of the buildings that continue to have problematic or illegal materials within them. And it is very, very difficult for strata in New South Wales without the ability to access some funding to assist with the remediation, to undertake that remediation. Hence, so many of them, unfortunately, are seeking to take legal steps to challenge the decisions that are needed to remediate their buildings to a level of public safety.
Thomas, can I go to you? Your submission outlines in your testimony this morning, and thank you very much for it, said that only 18 of the 290 buildings being investigated by council are in fact 18 out of the 509 are actually eligible, sorry, are actually applying for project. And only 72 are eligible. Have you had any feedback as to why such a small number have actually applied for Project Remediate?
Mr. Thomas, just before you do that, Courtney, you're coming through quite scratchy again and quite soft, so maybe if you could come closer to the microphone and maybe just quickly make that.
I think I've got the gist of it, Chair. So why, why do we think the take-up has been quite low? I'm only speculating here, but it's really the assistance provided probably is not enough. It's a loan-based system. It's limited. I think we say in our submission that funding should be available for building owners to investigate this. My understanding is that the funding isn't available. It's only for rectification. So if they are able to get funding to carry out the investigations and get a better understanding of their position, then we might have more take-up.
That's really helpful. I'll come back to you in a moment, Mr. Worosinski. Can you tell me, have you done any analysis of your buildings of, that are on the cladding... Oh, sorry, you said that only one is eligible for Project Remediate. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, one out of 74 on the Cladding Register.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay. Mr. Thomas, can I come back to you? Oh, sorry, Mr. Worosinski, do you have any analysis of the progress of that remediation of those buildings that were identified on the Cladding Register?
One of my office's notes next to me here, we've carried out 37 investigations to date out of the 74 buildings. We've issued 18 notices and 21 fire orders. So we're progressing through the list on a risk basis, addressing the buildings which are obviously of a greater risk and include residential-type buildings and prior to commercial buildings.
And do you have any feedback on the actual progress of remediation? Do you know how many have actually been remediated yet?
Not at this point, no. Some buildings have undertaken some work, but it is likely, in some cases, to take one to two years quite easily. We have had, in some cases, timeframes provided which extend the works over a two-year period, so it's not a quick fix.
Yeah, absolutely. Do you mind taking on notice and just seeing if you've got any further information about the actual progress of the remediation?
Sure.
Thanks very much. Mr. Thomas, can I come back to you? Now, obviously, City of Sydney has got the bulk of these buildings, or it seems to have the bulk of these buildings. And yet, a very small number are registered for Project Remediate. But you've actually gone a step further and done some analysis about which ones would actually be eligible. Mr. Worosinski outlined that the, one of those reasons would be they're a different class of buildings. Is that the only reason why they're not eligible for Project Remediate under your analysis?
I'd have to get back to you on the detail, but essentially, we, that estimate, council estimate, would be based on the criteria of Project Remediate. So our estimate is that the rest of them don't meet that criteria.
Yeah, which goes to show that the project that is designed to remove cladding from buildings in New South Wales is not actually effectively removing them. Mr. Thomas, I just had one more question for you. In terms of the standards, and you mentioned that you were actually being forced to litigate in council, and that was a very useful case study. Is there just the one that your case that you're aware of, or are there other multiple cases that you have had to pursue?
To, I'm only aware of one that has gone to court where our notice has been challenged.
Okay. And, but having clearer standards... And but having clearer standards and some direct guidance from the state government would have actually assisted you with that process, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, excellent. That's all I have for now. Pass to my colleagues and I might have some more questions for you later on. Thank you.
Mr De Adam.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Look, I have a question for Mr Worosinski. The, in your submission, you talk about the compliance cost notices being unworkable. And I wonder whether you might be able to explain in some more detail about the limitations of that mechanism in terms of recovering compliance costs for councils? Why isn't that an option?
Sure, thank you. The, my understanding of those provisions are that basically you would need to, or council would need to document every minute that it spends on a particular case, which along the lines of a lawyer, I think, to be honest, no disrespect to our lawyer colleagues. But for compliance officers, there would normally be multiple officers working on any case. The investigating officer would liaise with the coordinator, the coordinator would liaise with the manager himself. We would be involved in a case intermittently over a period of time. It may last for one week, it may last for one year. The, the amount of work involved from an administrative point of view would far away, away the costs which are limited to, I'm going from memory here. I think it's a thousand dollars or so is the, is the amount that one can recover. I'm not 100% sure that I would have to take that on notice. But the costs administering the process far away the costs that you can recover through the compliance notice process.
I see. So what, what, what could potentially be done to improve that system rather than? I mean, obviously, there's a clear issue around imposing a levy on all developments, whether they're complying or non-complying. In that circumstance, you know, people who are doing the right thing, who are totally compliant, bearing a burden that actually should be borne by those who are non-compliant. What kind of measures might be able to be put in place to try and improve where the burdens of compliance activity is borne?
The, in my view, obviously, the levy is the, I guess, simplest approach for councils to manage because it's, it's set and fixed percentage and it's attributed to the development application. If that is not a suitable process, then a compliance cost notice process would have to be as simple as you could possibly get it. Obviously, it still needs to be undertaken in an accountable way. But it would need to be simple. It could be a fixed amount along the lines of the Protection of the Environment Operations Act, which there is a cost, a fixed cost associated with the issue of a notice. Having said that, council doesn't issue notices and orders in respect of every compliance issue. We resolve matters in many cases without having to issue a notice or an order. And in reality, the vast majority of compliance matters are resolved before we issue the order. Hopefully, it's not necessary to issue an order if the matter's been resolved before that. So basing the fee purely on the issue of the order, it is not going to happen in probably 80% of cases.
Okay, thank you. Back to you, Chair. Thanks. Does another committee member have questions at this stage? Sure. The, I understand, Miss Khan. The, the, the project remediate, if a project is in project remediate, provides, I think, a one-off $10,000 payment to councils to assist with regulatory burden of managing the removal and replacement of the cladding. Is that a kind of reasonable assessment of what the actual costs to council are in these projects? I'll go to you, Mr Thomas, because you put it in your submission first and then I'll invite councillor Scott, Mr Worosinski.
So Chair, was that directed at me or at Romans?
It was. Is $10,000 at all a reasonable calculation for the costs and time that council have in managing a project?
Look, it's welcomed, it's a, it's a contribution, but it would not go towards the full costs or of administering these matters, particularly if it goes to, to court. And I've put some figures in our submission about our, our wages bill and our court costs, for one example.
Councillor Scott.
Thank you. Like Mr Thomas, of course, we welcome any contribution from the state, but it is, of course, manifestly inadequate. I cited some of the examples for Ride Council, an estimated $1.3 million loss. For Walladilly, an estimated $700,000 loss. Lizmore, $300,000, Tweed, $260,000. These are significant losses. And of course, at any time, these are challenging for councils to sustain. But in the context of the COVID losses that local governments have experienced, it makes the ability for councils to continue funding these regulatory activities untenable. And of course, we know that our ability to have freedom over the rates that we charge, the ability of local governments really to have freedom over the context of how we maintain our budget settings is highly regulated here in New South Wales, unlike any other state in Australia. And so it is just an impossible cost for us to bear. This is a risk to public safety. Councils cannot sustain these regulatory activities we are required by law to undertake to maintain public safety without further funding. We need to be very, very clear and transparent about this because we fear a future whereby councils will not be able to fund the regulation of checking that a building is safe and that as a result, we will have a fire that risks lives. We will have asbestos in a building or that is dumped illegally, but we're unable to prevent from happening or safely clean up. We're unable to prevent a building that is at risk of collapsing. These are significant outcomes that can lead to significant injury or death. And we need to be very transparent about the challenges that we face in meeting the enormous number of buildings with these risks in them and funding the regulatory programme that is required to ensure that they are safe.
Mr Worosinski.
I think the provision of a $10,000 funding for councils is obviously a good start. I haven't costed what, what I would estimate the amount of time would be to assess such a building and to monitor it throughout the upgrading work and then to issue whatever certificates were required at the end. I would think that $10,000 was a bit low personally. Perhaps double that would be more realistic. But also, that's only addressing the buildings which are on project remediate. Not all high-risk buildings and certainly not all buildings on the cladding register. So it would be good to see some funding for the assessment and upgrade of all of the buildings on the cladding register.
Well, in your case, Mr Worosinski, you'll get like one, one $10,000 payment. And yet you've got 74 projects to manage. I mean, it's embarrassingly insufficient. Would be a fair summary, wouldn't it?
Extremely.
Mr Thomas, you, you said, how many staff did you say have been brought on at the city of Sydney just to handle this issue of flammable cladding?
We have a team of four new positions. I must say, we are finding it difficult to maintain those four staff. We recently lost a staff member to fair trading, moved over into the project remediate team. But we do attract skilled and experienced staff who like the challenge of these very complex buildings. But it, but it is challenging.
That poaching sounds almost insult to injury, but probably not the, the topic of today's hearing. But you give a costing in your submission of three just for the wages of a senior building surveyor. I mean, in order of $378,000 plus all of the other costs you'd have. So is that a good starting point, you think, for the kind of costing?
Yeah, absolutely. They are gross annual wage costs, that that figure is quoted there. The administration, management and legal costs, they're, they're costs already born by the city. And however, some of those would be added towards this challenge.
Would it be fair to say the most urgent thing that's needed at the moment is a set of clear, transparent standards for this? That you can just, that have got the approval of the state government, that are going to limit your liability, but also give a safe and prompt pathway forward? Is that the most urgent thing or is something else more urgent than that? Councillor Scott?
Yes, that is the most urgent and important thing. And can we just add that even with the, again, the $10,000, which is of course welcome, that is, we understand an offer made by the Building Commissioner, David Chandler. It's very welcome, but it's not guaranteed to continue. We're not clear how it will be funded into the future. And so even then, councils don't have confidence that that will be, you know, a thing that the government will continue to approve or fund. What is of course needed is the ability of councils to, like the state government now has the power to, charge compliance levies. And without this formal guarantee that councils have an ability to do that, the regulation of our buildings, the ability for councils to feel confident that we are able to do the work to keep communities safe in our buildings in New South Wales is under threat.
Monsieur Soss.
Thanks very much, Mr Chair. I've just got a few questions. Sorry, can I just ask, Mr Thomas, how many buildings did you say are actually classified as high risk? I'm not sure if I got that figure from you.
That is a question I'll need to get back to on. I'll take that on notice. And it varies because we might assess a building as high risk. We investigate it, we decide that it's not, and then it comes off our high risk list.
Sorry, could I just, could I just ask in a sense a follow-up question, Courtney there? If you're going to, if you're going to come back to us with that, are you able to differentiate in terms of those high-risk buildings between high-risk residential and high-risk commercial? Because I think otherwise, we're not necessarily dealing with chalk. Well, we're mixing two different issues up, I think.
Understood. And I'll just, one example of a high-risk building, it's a, it's a real live example. We have a commercial office building with a podium. And in that podium, we have a childcare centre. So from our first analysis, it wouldn't be a high risk, but you, we, we have to look at what the approved uses are. And given that there's a childcare centre in the building, that immediately moves towards our high risk list, if you like. But yes, I can give you a breakdown of, of our cladding programme to date, what we considered high risk, what, how many notices we've, we've issued, how many have been satisfied and how many have been moved away from a high-risk classification.
Yeah, I'm not downgrading the problem, but it just seems to me levels of government support being provided to residential buildings is, creates different issues than whether the government should or should not support commercial entities from bearing the costs of rectification and the matters associated with, with, with that. You'd agree with that, would you not? They are two different, different issues as to where the government should step in.
Generally, yes. And I, and I think this point hasn't been made. We're often in this triangle, if you like, of of stakeholders in these matters. We've got the slash builder developer in one point of the triangle, the strata or the owner, and then council as the regulatory body. So often we are fighting with, well, we are serving notices and on, on the developer, and it depends on how long ago, you know, et cetera, et cetera. And the developer, if you like, is, might also be in litigation with the owners because the owners are seeking compensation for a flammable cladding on the building. So the developers are challenging our assessment because they don't want to have to pay to rectify the building. So there, that, that brings out the uniqueness and the challenges, I think, of a residential building versus a commercial building.
I, I was only going to ask one question, so I've stepped on Courtney's toes, so I'll just withdraw for a second.
Flammable cladding had been removed from the child, from the building with a childcare centre in it yet? Has that been fixed?
I'd have to get back to you on that, Chair.
Monsieur Soss.
Thanks. I just had one final question, which was, can you tell us when you started issuing notices, Mr Thomas and Mr Worosinski? When did, when did councils first start informing buildings and building owners that they would need to begin the rectification process?
I, the detail on that, I'll have to get back to you on. I just know our programme has been in existence for three years. Now, whether we served a notice first up, you know, within that time, three-year time period, I'll have to give you notice on.
So roughly, though, you, you started working on this three years ago, started telling buildings that they needed to, we can assume within the first couple of months, you would have started telling buildings that they needed to be replacing this dangerous flammable cladding. Mr Worosinski already told us this can take up to two years. So there's actually a whole bunch of building owners out there that may have, because of the slow rollout of project remediate, actually just done it themselves, incurred this cost of millions and millions and millions of dollars and actually missed the boat entirely. Is that, is that accurate?
It would be accurate to say that some of these buildings have remediated or gone through, removed the cladding, replaced it with something else. Absolutely. We've got some projects that have gone through that process.
Thanks very much, Mr Thomas. Mr Worosinski, do you, do you know roughly when Randwick started issuing notices?
We, I guess, we started our approach shortly after we were provided with the list of high-risk buildings from the New South Wales Government. That came in, going from maybe over a period of time, but it would have been approximately commencing around about three years ago or thereabouts. I would need to check specifically, but we started by writing to the owners of the high-risk buildings and to more or less encourage them to have the matters investigated, to engage specialist fire safety engineers and to come up with fire safety strategies in preference to issuing notices and orders. But we have issued a number of notices and orders as we progress through the list on the cladding register. Yeah, so that's pretty much in the last two to three years, it would be.
Sorry, I just have one final question for councillor Scott, just off the back of that. Do you have any reflections on the pace of the rollout and the pace of the support from the New South Wales Government and what that's meant for local government in New South Wales?
It's not hard to envisage the scenes of some very, very stressful strata committee meetings with stratas across the state grappling with how they're going to face the costs. And of course, just acknowledging that I think is really important as part of this debate. It is of course also extremely difficult for councils, you've heard. But again, these examples from the city of Sydney and Randwick are representative of the struggles that councils are facing across the state to grapple with the to grapple with the understandable lack of funding and stresses of strata committees, but also the requirement on councils to protect the public safety and therefore to press ahead where needed with orders to ensure that buildings are meeting the legal and other safety standards. I think the critical thing, and if there is one thing this committee can do, a reform to encourage the state government to remove this regulation that disallows councils from being able to charge, to recover some of the costs associated with compliance activities. This is a critical rate limiting step that will threaten the safety of our buildings going forward. But more generally to your question, the pace of reform is too slow. We've seen that in direct contrast in Victoria, the funding made available, the clarity of standards has meant that there is a significant difference in that state's ability to ensure the safety of their public buildings. This is a good model and we urge the state government here to listen to these concerns, to adopt a model that is closer to the Victorian model. And we hope that this will enable the state to move forward with the pace that's required to protect public safety.
Thanks very much. Back to you, Chair.
Thanks, Ms Hughes- Ross. I might put this question to both City of Sydney and Randwick. The insurance industry, Engineers Australia and Consulting Australia have said that the absence of professional indemnity insurance is a real barrier towards getting buildings remediated with flammable cladding. That in fact, that's one of the reasons why it's very hard to get a fire engineering expert or a cladding expert to even write the report about how to do remediation. What are you hearing in your dealings with building owners and the industry? Mr Thomas?
Anecdotally, I would concur. The, it is increasingly difficult and we at council have seen more owners looking for certification through councils rather than through the private sector because of their inability to get professional indemnity insurance.
Mr Werosinski?
Likewise, I haven't heard much recently, but similar, similar to what Andrew was saying. Many certifiers may not have the insurance cover to deal with that, so they are quite comfortable to, I guess, let council deal with their notices and orders and I guess that way council share the burden around a bit as far as liability goes.
But does that mean that councils are taking on an increasing liability risk here? Because you said earlier, there weren't clear standards established by the state government. If you're making orders and recommendations in the absence of those standards, is that transferring a risk on direct paths? Mr Thomas?
Well, just to follow this through, if there's a notice to remove the cladding or, and then a building certifier could potentially be involved when the solution, if you like, in response to that notice, goes through the process. Now they either do that through a development application or in response to a notice. So the council's role would be to sign off, if you like, on that work. And I guess the challenge here is that in the absence of those standards, we are taking a very risk averse approach. And if it's on there, it shouldn't be and it's got to come off. And that's, it's, it's, it's a fairly kind of direct decision-making process.
I think I understand. Mr Werosinski, you're nodding. It's similar approach in Randwick, is that right?
Yes, I would, I would agree that any time that council issues a notice or order or is signing off on something, it obviously wears some degree of liability. So yes, we are, I guess, quite risk averse when it comes to cladding. And we are probably a little bit fussy when it comes to building certification work too, which is obviously why many, I guess proponents decide to go to colleagues in the private sector.
Yes, very euphemistic end, Mr Werosinski, but I, can I say, time has beaten us unfortunately. But on behalf of the committee, thank you all for your evidence, for your evidence today. From my perspective, all of your residents are fortunate to have you there doing your work, looking after public safety. And we're grateful for the work you did and your assistance. We will now have a very short recess and resume at 12:10pm, when we'll have Engineers Australia, the Insurance Council of Australia and Consult Australia. So again, thanks everybody for your attendance. Witnesses, you're obviously free to go and members of the committee mute and shortly, and put your video off. See you again. Yes, could I ask you each in your own, in turn, to give your name, state your name, your position, then take either the oath or the affirmation? I'll just give you the order now. We might go Ms McMaster, Mr Tong, Mr Nugent and then Ms Yolstein. Ms McMaster.
Thank you. My name is Jane McMaster. I'm Chief Engineer at Engineers Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me is truth, the whole and nothing but the truth.
Mr Tong?
Thanks Chair. This is Bowen Tong. I'm a Senior Manager during Reform and Projects at Engineers Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Mr Tong. Mr Nugent?
Thank you, Corey Nugent, representing the Insurance Council of Australia, Senior Operations Manager. I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thank you. And Ms Yolstein?
Thank you. Kristy Yolstein, Head of Policy and Government Relations, Consult Australia. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you all for your attendance today and the, both the joint submission and the individual submissions we've got. I might just invite you, if you wish to make a brief opening statement, and for ease, we might adopt the same order if that's convenient to witnesses.
Thank you. I'll start, Jane McMaster. Good afternoon, everyone. Engineers Australia is the peak body of the engineering profession in Australia. We are a professional association with about 100,000 individual members. Established in 1919, Engineers Australia is a not-for-profit organisation constituted by Royal Charter to advance the science and practice of engineering for the benefit of the community. The engineering profession in New South Wales has seen major change in the building and construction industry since 2019. And overall, there have been positive changes. The introduction of a statutory registration scheme for engineers is particularly welcomed. However, there are some issues caused by unintended consequences of the new legislation and remaining gaps in implementation of some recommendations from the underlying building confidence report, which are causing some concerns. These have been detailed in our submission. We look forward to answering your questions. And finally, I should emphasise that continued collaboration amongst the New South Wales Government practitioners and their professional industry bodies is critical to the ongoing success of the reform. Professional and industry bodies like ours, with the help of their members, have shown great willingness to work together. Engineers Australia has contributed significantly to the development of practical solutions, including a series of practice guides, one for risk-based approaches to manage flammable cladding and another on contracts and professional indemnity insurance. And the latter was jointly developed by Engineers Australia, Consult Australia and the Australian Institute of Architects. Our organisation is also working very closely with the Department of Customer Service and the Office of the Building Commissioner. We support the department on its implementation of Pathway One for engineer registration, providing assessment services on behalf of the department for the more complex applications for registration. Our organisation is an active participant on all commissioners' pillar working groups. We've commenced a programme of regular briefings by Fair Trading New South Wales to our members to share lessons learned from the occupational certificate audits, and there are other efforts which we're happy to elaborate on. Engineers Australia is committed to working closely with the New South Wales Government to promote the reforms and bring lessons back to the profession so that engineering practice can be improved. Thank you, and we look forward to this discussion today.
Mr Tong?
Chair, actually I don't have any other statement because Jane already made one on behalf of Engineers Australia.
Yep, yeah, I thought that might actually be the case. Mr Nugent? Mr Nugent, you are still on mute.
Apologies for that. Thank you. By way of redaction, general insurers provide Australians with 43 million business and household policies each year and pay more than 166 million in claims every working day. Insurance is a key component of the economy, particularly so in the building construction industry. Insurers are proud of the way we have supported the growth of our nation and supported the building industry, underwriting different elements of construction and the post completion use of Australians' homes and buildings. In recovering from the effects of natural disasters and how we emerge from the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic, insurers support businesses and homeowners providing protection to their assets. Unfortunately, not all sectors of the economy are performing as strongly. And the general insurance sector is currently enduring its most challenging circumstances in nearly two decades. Insurer profitability over the last 24 months, ending March 2021, was down 64% on the preceding two years. According to APRA, the entire general insurance sector only made a profit of $19 million in the most recent March quarter. Professional indemnity insurance has been a difficult market for general insurers over the past three years. In that period, the product reported gross loss ratios of more than 95%. Loss ratios greater than 100% mean that the premium revenue is insufficient to meet just the claims expense. A recent report jointly produced by the New South Wales Division of Strata Communities Association, the Office of Building Commissioner, highlighted stark results relative to the performance of the building and construction industry in New South Wales. 39% of a sample of 1,400 New South Wales buildings, all completed within the last six years, reported having serious defects. These findings are not created by any one cohort or segment of the industry. They are a reflection on the whole industry and further highlight the need for change. The cost of rectifying defects in completed buildings is significant and that impact is generally felt most by consumers. Litigation, often the only method of enforcing rights against the various contributors to the occurrence of defects, provides for an extended period of time and likely erosion of the ultimate benefit available to have properties rectified to the base level of performance that should have existed at purchase. The Construct New South Wales Reform Agenda is leading the nation in seeking redress, seeking to redress the issues identified in the Building Confidence Report and to implement the recommendations in that report. It's important to identify, however, that the agenda is still within its transformative stage. The insurance industry supports the New South Wales Government in finalising the Construct New South Wales Programme to achieve the improvements across the industry. While insurers have expressed concern with some elements of the reforms, notably those related to the retrospective nature of insurance requirements under the Design and Building Practitioners Regulations, we are committed to working with government to seek suitable outcomes for insurers, the building industry and the community. We note the retrospective insurance obligations within the regulations came about by virtual amendments to those regulations and the insurance industry has highlighted in submissions to government that the insurance industry is unable to support those retrospective duty of care requirements now or in the future. Some commentary relative to professional indemnity insurance, that it is either unavailable or premium increases make it too expensive. In the four years to December 2020, claims expense from professional indemnity insurance increased by 125%, whereas premiums increased in that same period by 63%. Further to this, APRA reported in March 2021 that for the preceding 12 months, general insurers issued over 775,000 individual professional indemnity insurance policies valued at more than $3 billion in premium. These facts highlight that the professional indemnity insurance market in Australia is competitive and that the product is most definitely available. While performance of the product is challenging for general insurers, there is cover available to those wishing to purchase it. Insurance premiums represent the cost of risk. That is, the value of a premium correlates with the expected cost of claims determined by experience. While there'll be individual cases highlighting larger premium increases or difficulty in accessing cover, those specific premium policy terms correlate to the risk posed from a portfolio perspective. With the transformational Construct New South Wales reforms being implemented, there are examples of insurer appetite changing. The introduction of a new insurance capacity specifically for certifiers supported by that cohort adopting a professional standards programme has seen a dedicated insurance offering being made available. This exemplifies the benefits being seen as government and industry work together to bring about tangible change in the output from the construction industry. In terms of future premium and policy conditions relative to professional indemnity insurance, those factors will be determined by the performance of the product, a factor directly and inescapably linked to the performance of the industry. Where there is improvement in the performance and a reduction in claims exposures, there is likely to be improvement in the policy terms and premium pressures. Notwithstanding existing premium policy pressures, that is a function of a strong regulatory environment. Critical to the performance of the insurance market in Australia is a strong regulatory framework administered by APRA. The risk of unregulated insurance options such as discretionary mutual funds provides for uncertain security for beneficiaries and the dilution of the regulatory framework that provides a strong financial services sector in Australia, which is the envy of many jurisdictions around the world. While establishing the basis of a strong regulatory environment for the future building product producing in New South Wales, the issues impacting the existing stock of buildings is an important consideration. The Residential Apartment Buildings Compliance and Enforcement Act is a critical element of the Construct New South Wales Agenda. Facilitating the powers for regulators such as the Office of Building Commissioner and Fair Trading to inspect and issue notices for rectification of defective building work will provide substantial change in the ability for consumers to efficiently seek redress for building design and construction. The benefits for this are already seen in the Cladding Remediation Programme, title Project Remediate. The remediation programme of potentially life-threatening combustible cladding systems in New South Wales is important to insurers. The insurance industry has engaged with the Office of Building Commissioner and the Cladding Product Safety Panel in identifying the causation, options to remediate and best solutions to ensure an appropriate solution is identified. While there has been a great deal of commentary related to this programme, insurers support a comprehensive programme of work being undertaken through government to ensure a complete and appropriate solution to those buildings identified by the Cladding Taskforce. Finally, the insurance industry understands the intention of government to consider the introduction of a decennial liability insurance product and we welcome the opportunity to engage with government in those considerations. Decennial liability insurance is a product offered in over 35 countries and it delivers tangible first resort benefits to consumers in remediation of defects in buildings when those occurs. Importantly, this is a consumer protection insurance product, unlike others which have through regulation taken a much wider cover than they were intended to provide. Happy to take further questions from the committee.
Thanks very much, Mr Nugent. Now, I should just note that the Chair is having some connection difficulties. So in his absence as the previously acting temporary Chair or some such name, I jump into the role. So before I pass to Ms Yolstein, I'll just make a disclosure that my husband, George, recently commenced work with the Insurance Council of Australia. Ms Yolstein?
Thank you very much. Consult Australia is the industry voice for businesses in design, advisory and engineering. And approximately 97% of those businesses are small businesses. So in that capacity, Consult Australia looks to certainty, consistency and also a consideration of commercial pressures when any reform is introduced. We reiterate our commitment to and recognition of the importance of appropriate and proportionate regulation that can deliver the policy outcome the New South Wales Government was seeking, that is better building compliance and increased consumer confidence for New South Wales. However, as the Insurance Council of Australia has just spoken to, the PI market, the professional indemnity insurance market, is in a particular state at the moment that makes it particularly difficult for our members. In a recent Industry Health Check Pulse survey from April this year, around 90% of our members have experienced significant premium increases to their PI insurance, with around 11% reporting that they experienced increases of over 100% in the last 12 months. And I'll point to the ICA, they're saying that it's a global market and a lot of pressures act to give us that sort of market. So the New South Wales reforms are just one element. And you will see from Consult Australia's submission that we look to de-risking that we look to de-risking solutions both in terms of the current regulation but also in the market more generally. And the role of the New South Wales Government as a regulator in other spaces and as a client that reaches contracts with our members. So I'd like to take, you know, if you are available to for questions, I have many proposed solutions in the submission that go both to the regulation and the Act, but also that broader question on civil liability and other arrangements to improve and de-risk that PI market. Thanks.
Um thank you all for those openings. This committee works disturbingly well in my absence. So thanks, Ms Huseltsper, for taking over. Um could I, could I ask you just to kick off the questioning? We, we, I understand that the Building Commissioner and Fair Trading are in the process of negotiating with the industry, particularly the insurance industry, to have a viable professional indemnity product. Um the reports that are coming from government are that those negotiations are well advanced, that there's a product ready to go. Um but it, that may, the situation may or may not be more complicated than that. Mister Nugent, are you able to provide any, um any light on this?
Oh, thanks, Mister Shubridges. In terms of the PI market, as we indicated in our opening, the, the position with professional indemnity is that it is under quite a bit of pressure. We appreciate or we acknowledge the position that has come forward in regulations, and we do have, as an industry, issues with the retrospective elements of PI insurance that are, that have been put in that position, and we are working with government to address those. The issue with forward-acting professional indemnity insurance is one relative to the portfolio and the performance of that portfolio. So as claims experience improves, that will reduce the pressure on, on premiums and on policy terms.
Well, what about in the space of flammable cladding? Um I mean, I've, I've read your various submissions. You indicate that there is such pressure in this place that there's normally exclusions from professional indemnity policies. Um I might go to Consult Australia first and then Engineers Australia.
I won't speak directly to the cladding issue, but back to your question, Chair, about finding an appropriate product for the market. Consult Australia's concern is that the professional indemnity insurance policy that covers one of our members, for example, is a broad policy that covers their professional indemnity no matter what job they work on. So it is not a specific product to deal with building works in New South Wales. So therefore, there are lots of other elements to consider, and I'm sure the Insurance Council of Australia or brokers, for example, could talk to all the different elements that go into that policy. So we do have a concern about a particular product that could address just one segment of our, our members working in just New South Wales buildings. The pressures that are occurring in the market and occurring with our member businesses are occurring no matter where they work, whether it's on infrastructure, whether it's in buildings, whether they are structural engineers, whether they are fire safety or geotech. So the PI market is a much broader issue than just the New South Wales building reforms, and that is why Consult Australia supports those reforms that will improve the confidence of the, and compliance with building standards, but there are broader issues to consider when thinking about de-risking the market.
Miss McMaster?
Thank you. Yes, look, I'll support those comments by both Ms Eulenstein and Mister Nugent. Um the issue of professional indemnity insurance is quite complex. It is very important. There are pressures in the market, and that is supported by evidence from our members as well. Um we do see anecdotal evidence of exclusions, not just cladding, but exclusions in procurement on contracts are unfortunately relatively common, so that is a consideration. And I'd also like to support the, the comment made by Mister Nugent about, you know, the, the insurance market following the risk profile of, of the sector. And that's one particular area that Engineers Australia is working on to help the engineering profession in its contribution to building sector more broadly in its risk management practices to help improve the, the performance of, of the engineering work within building sector to reduce the risk profile so that hopefully professional indemnity insurance premiums will follow suit.
Well, I think we all agree the, that the short, medium and long-term goal is to actually make buildings safer, remove the defects and therefore remove the claims. But it would appear that the opposite has been happening in the last few years according to the numbers you give in your joint submission. So Nugent, you say that the, the claims numbers, the amount paid out in professional indemnity has grown by almost a hundred and twenty-five percent from some one point two billion dollars in twenty seventeen to two point seven billion dollars in twenty twenty. First of all, is that right? And secondly, how much of that relates to the building industry?
Uh thanks, Mister Shubridges. Yes, the numbers are right. They do reflect the claims experience in that space. That's across the PI portfolio. I'd have to take on notice the point during the construction industry data and figures and come back to you on that. However, in pointing to those points and I guess in responding to some of those areas, yes, the issue is to repair, to fix defects moving forward, as you've highlighted, and to address those factors. If we take a look at the cladding risk, there is a lot of work being done in that space to identify the risk, find solutions and address that moving forward. As the insurance industry, I guess the best two examples to play in that area would be that in the last twelve or eighteen months, new, as I indicated in the opening, there is a new facility, a PI facility available in Australia right now for certifiers able to access that cover, which includes a cladding proposition. It is not excluded. That gives you an indication that where the relevant professional standards and, and other mechanisms are in place, that those things will support insurance appetite and capacity. But that's only one area. If I, if I look to the cladding detail with Project Remediate, it is our understanding in the collaboration we've had with the Office of Building Commissioner that, that professional indemnity insurance will be sourced for that product, for the Cladding Remediation Programme, which is an important factor to consider in terms of is the insurance industry willing to support that product under the right conditions?
Well, we heard from the councils in just the previous panel, that Project Remediate is almost like a boutique element, given the scale of the problem. I think City of Sydney said they had something like five hundred and nine buildings with flammable cladding on it, and the eighteen of them are in Project Remediate. Randwick Council said they had seventy-four buildings with flammable cladding, only one was in Project Remediate. So whilst it's, it's good there's something stacked up for Project Remediate in terms of professional indemnity, what about for the, the great majority of buildings that have flammable cladding that aren't in Project Remediate? Is there a policy that's standing up now, Mister Nugent?
Well, as, as I indicate, for those certifiers that revolved under that product, it doesn't provide a cladding exclusion under that policy, and it wasn't Project Remediate central. So there is a product through a major international insurer that is, is now available for that segment. So that would indicate that, taking your long, short and, sorry, short, medium and long-term view, that yes, that capacity is there where the conditions meet. Uh the risk proposition, in terms of the numbers of buildings that are in Project Remediate or not in Project Remediate, again, it is the start of that process. And the, the determination of buildings that were in that were done by an expert panel, including Fire, New South Wales Fire and Rescue and the local government associations. So we would defer to those experts as to what buildings fall into that programme or don't.
I, I don't think local government New South Wales was part of choosing the, the buildings that go into Project Remediate, but I could be wrong. Um in terms of your members, Miss McMaster, Mister Tong, are your members able to access, readily access professional indemnity insurance to cover the risks, say, of remediating dangerous flammable cladding? What are you hearing?
Um Baoying Tong, are you able to comment on that question?
Yeah, for sure. Chair, just on that, on that point, I can, I guess, speak on behalf of our members. And it's worth mentioning that when we talk about those engineers who providing facade engineering services, uh mostly we are talking about those who are working either for themselves or those who are working for medium-sized companies actually facing the issues around facade. So for those who are working for big companies, no, the situation is not that bad. Uh for, as far as the conversation goes, we understand that our members in the facade space, they've been having a lot of challenges with first getting affordable insurance products. And second, also with getting insurance products with, I guess, with a limited number of exclusions in the policies. So that's been the observation since last year. And I do know that there are some insurers who are providing insurance policies that are not excluding too much on facade aspects. However, as far as I understand, quite a few of our members actually have issues with getting the right insurance policies and covering their works in the remediation space.
Does Consult Australia wish to add anything?
Um no, just that broader point again, Chair, that our members, you know, especially if they have a business that does diverse work, their PI policy covers all of their work. So whether they can, you know, manage any remediation work is one question, but whether their policy will cover their other obligations, including if they were forced to contract out of proportionate liability, et cetera, and suffer a claim under that arm of the contract, that's a, that's a major concern for our members. So really, talking to that risk management point that Engineers Australia talked to earlier, from Consult Australia's point of view, one of the biggest risk management tools any business can do when there are consulting business, and in the current PI market, is contract management and trying to get fair and reasonable contracts.
All right, Ms Husels.
Thanks very much, Chair. Um can I thank all of you for your time today and very much for your questions. They were really helpful. Relating with Project Interpreatory.
Courtney, again, again, you're coming through very patchily. Maybe start again.
Sorry, I, I was, my apologies. Um so I just wanted to start by saying thank you very much for your submissions. They were really helpful and very informative for some of those key issues that we are confronting in the inquiry. I wanted to start with the Insurance Council. Um you explicitly say, and, and part of the purpose of the building, I was having another inquiry into the building regulation in New South Wales is to investigate the efficacy of those reforms that the government has introduced. And one of those, you, you've outlined in your, in your submission, is that there is insurance that will not currently be available for the range of practitioners that are proposed to be registered. Uh I think the Chair touched on this earlier, but is there anything that is currently ready to go to register the building, the, the professionals under the Building and Design Practitioners Act?
Uh thanks, Mister Husels. The, in terms of the current market, in terms of our submission, there are a number of errors and the, the PI issues in that space are quite complex and quite diverse. If I was to look at the Design and Building Practitioners Act and the retrospective elements of what is imposed, the Insurance Council has indicated the insurance industry doesn't have a product for that and is unlikely to have a product for that for the reasons that we set out in our submission. Um on a proscriptive basis, moving forward, insurers, and I won't say all of them, each insurer will take their own position, will set their own risk management profile and position and acceptance position moving forward on that basis. We've not had great deals of, of pushback in that area, that there's been significant changes to policy terms and conditions. I'm sure there, there may be one or two that have a different view. But on a proscriptive basis, there is no position that cover is not available because of the Act in that space.
So Mister Nugent, you're, oh, sorry. Someone else want to jump in? Miss Yul, no? Um so your submission then goes on to say insurers will not have an appetite to provide cover for the historical stock of buildings where work was undertaken without sufficient oversight. And I think that, that is probably a fair enough assessment. But what this means is that building owners themselves, apartment owners themselves, will be left to pay for this work. There is no way that it will be covered by insurance. Is that accurate?
In isolation, it may be a, a fair view, but as, as I indicated in our opening, the New South Wales Government is considering right now the, the position for a future decennial liability product. Again, that will enable consumers to have better and more open access to true consumer protection in that position. I think there's an important distinction to be made there that professional indemnity insurance has been used as a consumer protection product when it is not that. It is an insurance product designed to protect the, the legal basis of those professionals. And, and my colleague's here with me now, it's designed to protect those areas. Consumers ought to have the ability to have a consumer product, such as a decennial liability, to, to protect their investment moving forward.
But decennial, the decennial insurance will only be available for newly constructed buildings. That's correct, isn't it?
It, it will be, but again, in support of that, again, the, the, what we term as the RAB Act, so the Residential Apartment Buildings Act, is an important piece of work in that Construct New South Wales platform that it enables the Building Commissioner and the Office of Fair Trading to look retrospectively on buildings that are completed, to go back and make orders for that work directly to the people that contributed to or caused that, that, that position of loss, to go back and have those works rectified. So again, there is a position there in protection of consumers on that historic stock while we move through the transformation of this new regulatory environment.
So, so, sorry, the, so your evidence is then that the decennial insurance will cover those going forward? And that the, the power is given to the Building Commissioner to pursue defective work in the past will be the thing that protects consumers.
That's right.
In the, in historical. But that won't necessarily, I mean, we've, we've heard this morning, and I don't expect that you have tuned in this morning, but we've heard this morning from consumers who are about to move or are hoping to move into a building that has been constructed. We've obviously, we've seen what's happened at Mascot Towers, where the, the, that's probably one of the most obvious examples of where there are historical defects that are in place. Ultimately, it's not going to be sold by insurance, is it? Those, those defects, addressing those concerns, is actually going to be ultimately left up to building owners.
Uh that, that, that could be one, one outcome. I, I, in terms of the retrospective elements, the insurance industry is being asked to provide cover to those historic buildings without being able to collect a premium on those things for when they occurred and provide that cover. From that proposition, as we had in our submission, that has not been quantified. The risk is either very difficult to ascertain or not possible to ascertain as to what's occurred over those previous ten years and what impact that would have in premium would, would not be able to be calculated. So it requires a regulated outcome to address those historic issues. It flows on to details that the insurance industry is extremely interested in on, on a number of things where we, we work to, future resilience on buildings, for example. It also encompasses that existing stock. So what do we do with the eight million homes around Australia that are built in a way that present that risk? It takes governments and it takes regulation to address those issues.
Um thanks very much, Mister Nugent. Can I just ask you, Ms Yulunstein, and thank you very much as well for your submission. You're, you've got some specific solutions that you propose to help de-risk the insurance market and what you say, remove the unnecessary financial and administrative burdens on the industry. Um you actually, one of them is to remove the insurance obligations from the Act and the regulation. Can you explain how that would actually work?
Yes, as the Insurance Council of Australia has just pointed out there, we feel that in the drafting of the regulations, insurance was seen as a consumer protection rather than a protection for the business. It is a business tool used by business to deal with any liability that comes across their desk that they are liable for, any losses they are liable for. And that was made clear in the, the discussion paper, the consultation paper released by the New South Wales Government, where they used those words to describe the insurance obligation as a consumer protection. Um so for that reason, we, we propose that the, the requirement there in the regulations really is about consumer protection and that there is a better way to ensure consumer protection. As the Insurance Council of Australia has pointed out, there are tools and mechanisms being worked on for that aspect. But from our perspective, the real consumer protection is getting the designs right, getting the construction right. That is the ultimate consumer protection. Having a legislative requirement for insurance does not actually make the buildings better. It does not make the designs better. And once again, because a business's PI insurance or a professional's PI insurance, which is held by the business quite often, it's the business that buys it for them, et cetera, covers all of the work that that business does. The requirement that is in the regulation is very specific and requires the practitioner to say that the insurance they hold will cover them for all liabilities. That is very difficult for an individual practitioner to hold up their hand and affirm or swear to. They often don't see the policy. It is a business policy that's held by the business. There is that element as well. And because most of our work as a consulting engineer is done under contract, there are so many liabilities under contract. So it would be very, very difficult for a practitioner to say, my insurance will definitely cover me for all of the liabilities that might accrue. So there are multiple elements of that, of the insurance requirements in the regulations we have concerns with. And because the underlying premise was insurance as a consumer protection, we do not believe that having a regulatory requirement in there is delivering the consumer protection we need, which is stronger, safer buildings.
Perfectly encapsulated the problem and the challenges. Thank you very much. Ms. McMaster and Mr. Tong, can I move on to you? And this question of building manuals, which I find really interesting. Um, you actually, would this, I mean, I understand that this is an issue that's being looked at by the new round of the National Construction Code, but you seem to think that enforcement of the requirements within the EPNA Act as it stands, would that actually allow more complete, better quality manuals? Or will it actually need to be addressed through the National Construction Code?
I'll start with answering this question. Building manual has always been an area that's largely overlooked. So for, like I said, quality builders, normally they provide a pretty thorough, pretty complete building to the owner to operate their buildings. And you can say it is one way to safeguard the quality of buildings always lifetime. However, what we see is for projects, in particular for projects in the apartment building space, normally it's a challenge for the building owners or the strata managers to have a complete and, and what's more important, also accurate building menus that reflects the as-built information of the building. In regards to all comment we made in the submission, what we mentioned is in the current Environmental Planning and Building, Environmental Planning and Assessment Act, there is a requirement on the building menu. That is, for the building menu, the building certifiers, they can only issue occupation certificate once they see a copy of building menu. And also, furthermore, the EPNA Act actually also mentions that in the regulation, there will be more requirement around the building menu and also define what is complete building menu means. However, as far as I understand, in the, in the current, in the current Environmental Planning and Assessment Regulation, there's no such requirement on what forms a building menu. And hence, we potentially have a gap around that, around that aspect. And also come back to what you mentioned regarding the, what Australian Building Codes, Building Codes Board are doing. As part of their response through the Building Confidence Report, they assembled a team called the Building Confidence Report Implementation Team. And the team was tasked with providing recommendation to each of the recommendations highlighted by the BCR report. And one that came through this year is around the building menus, where the ABCB BCR implementation team actually provided some guidelines around the requirements of building menus. And what we suggest is when the New South Wales Government is considering providing further requirements on the building menus in the Environmental Planning and Assessment Regulation through future revisions, it's worthwhile considering what's been proposed by the ABCB team. And I guess to, if we can go to follow a nationally consistent approach on this aspect.
Thanks very much, Mr. Tong. I'll pass back to the Chair.
I think Mr. Khan has a few questions. Mr. Khan?
Um, yes, I will. I think I'll go to Mr. Nugent first. You've heard the proposal essentially put that insurance, the obligation for insurance be removed from the act. What would, what would the impact of that have on the DLI scheme that you've spoken of?
Thank you, Mr. Khan. The DLI scheme is separate of professional indemnity insurance. I can't see that removing PI from the act is going to stop consultants, engineers and other professionals from buying professional indemnity insurance. It will enable them to buy a product that is fit for purpose for their business. So PI insurance is a product, as Consult Australia have just provided details to, that protects their professional services. DLI insurance is a consumer protection product. It operates in over thirty-five countries around the world. It's designed to provide protection to the consumer for the quality of the structure of the building, which would appear to be closer to the link in terms of what was trying to be sought through that act and that regulation.
Right. I think you referred earlier in your, in your answers to the certifiers and the scheme that they've, in a sense, put in place. I take it to improve overall quality of certifiers. Is that the case?
I couldn't talk to why they created that scheme. That was a decision for certifiers, but my, my understanding is that the certifiers, a specific cohort of certifiers association put together a professional standard scheme, signed up to that and identified an insurance market that was prepared to offer a professional indemnity product, which had minimal or no exclusions relative to those touch points that are of concern right now for that segment. And that's targeting small and medium enterprises in that space as well. So quite small businesses in the, in the scope of certifiers. So it highlights the point that where those mechanisms are found, that there is an insurance response for those professions under those settings where they are correct.
Well, your answer does seem to suggest that the professional standards, in a sense, were created so that the insurance industry would be interested in, in providing a degree of coverage. That, that's correct, isn't it?
Without doubt, Mr. Khan. But, you know, in terms of the professional standards, there's a few different ways that they work. Professional standards are looked at by the insurance industry and taken to determine the effectiveness of that professional standard scheme. So that where there is better performance as a result of professional standards, that that will translate to less claims. That will translate then in turn to lower premiums because the market becomes more competitive. Alternatively, if you're in a professional standard scheme and that's not working as intended, then that would be a consideration for the professional standard service to look at how that operates. Where there are price pressures in insurance and there is an absence of a professional standard scheme, however, it should be something that is considered in whatever form that industry decides to look at it in. But it is something that should be considered to reduce the price pressures because of the claims experience that emanates out of that.
I'll just go to Consult Australia. So Kirsty, I just, I'm interested in this, this issue of the removal of, of of the insurance element from the act. If one were to take up that, then one would say that, for instance, my old profession solicitors shouldn't be obliged to have professional indemnity insurance either because it's simply a business expense and let them rip. That's essentially what you're proposing, isn't it?
No, I wouldn't say that Consult Australia has ever said let it rip. But we are not proposing that any of our members would go out and cancel their policies. Our members retain insurance policies for their businesses. And those, as the Insurance Council of Australia has pointed out, the policies they seek to get is to cover their range of business. What Consult Australia says is that in this act, in this regulation, the requirement for insurance doesn't lead to the policy outcome we want, which is to address the issues in building compliance and consumer confidence. Um, that our members who are engineers, for example, will retain their insurance because they must, as members of Engineers Australia, for example, if they are on the NER. So we do not, we do not see that it will lead to businesses going out and cancelling policies. We simply are saying that it will remove that obligation that hangs over practitioners' head to affirm that their coverage will cover them in all instances when they do not know what their insurance will actually cover when it comes to a claim, given that we are not just acting under this act and numerous other acts, but also under contract law. So that is, that is what Consult Australia is saying about the obligation there, rather than the actual of holding of insurance. Our businesses will continue to hold insurance to cover their liabilities, but that obligation is what we are concerned about.
See, if I take your reason to an end, you could say that CTP insurance actually doesn't ensure compliance with the road rules by, by the operators of motor vehicles in New South Wales. That would be correct, wouldn't it? Doesn't, doesn't have a jot of impact upon whether somebody drives quickly or not, for instance. You'd agree?
Indeed.
But CTP does ensure that a, that a not at fault person who was injured by a motor vehicle is covered. That would be correct, wouldn't it?
Yes, and CTP is a particular product that was, you know, it's for that purpose. Whereas, as we've said before, and everyone on the panel here has discussed, the PI policies that our members have is a much broader policy than that. So it's to cover all sorts of issues, including not just defaults in design errors in New South Wales construction. So it's not a specific product for that. That is why we have the concern.
I understand that, but, but insurance is required in some circumstances, not simply to ensure compliance with a, with a standard, whether it be driving on a road or a building standard, to ensure that if somebody suffers loss, that they actually have somebody to go to to recover that loss. That's the essential nature of a statutory scheme, isn't it?
Well, we go with the Insurance Council of Australia's advice there about, you know, it is, the PI policies we are talking about are business tools, not consumer protections. And if there was a consumer protection aspect in place, then that would be the preferred mode there.
Sorry, Ms. Yulandstein. Sorry, Mr. Khan.
No, no, no.
The purpose of professional indemnity insurance is to protect the professional for claims where damages have been caused by negligence by the professional. That's right?
Yep.
So if a professional's conduct is negligent and building owners then face millions of dollars to rectify the work because of the negligence of the professional, well then surely it's only reasonable that those losses can be recovered against the professional indemnity insurance product. Correct?
And we're not saying that claims can't be made under the policy. We are just saying that having a requirement to have insurance in the act and regulation as it's drafted with the individual practitioner, you know, having to say that they definitely will be covered for all liability is a concern for our members. They are concerned about putting up their hand when, for example, there may be a practitioner in a business and they haven't seen the policy. It also goes to the fact that the insurance companies themselves are not party to the act. And there is concern, I know, about revealing the commercial agreement between insurer and a business. And we see that in other sectors as well.
These sound to me like issues of commercial arrangements, either in a workplace or between an insurer and an insured. But it seems to miss the obvious reason why these reforms were put through, which is we've seen homeowner after homeowner after homeowner paying tens of thousands, sometimes hundreds of thousands, sometimes more in rectification work for negligent building work. And there's no insurance product against which they can claim. Seems to be ignoring that the whole social rationale for these reforms were being put through. Do you have a response to that, Ms. McMaster?
Yeah, and, and look, that, that is an absolute desired outcome from the whole building reform sector. I'm not an insurance expert, so I will decline to comment on the range of insurance products available. But it would seem to me that whether it's written into the act and the regulations or not needs to be thought through, it needs to work as a system. And if the regulations require, going to Ms. Yulandstein's point earlier, let's get to the root cause of the problem. We need to be aiming for good quality buildings in the first place. That's where we see that as the fundamental part of the picture. But insurance also has, is, obviously has an important role to play. Whether or not it sits within the act, I don't have a firm view. Mr. Tong, do you have any comments to add there?
Well, Mr. Tong, in doing that, you might address this one observation, that one of the benefits in terms of quality of requiring professionals to be insured is that insurers will be looking to, looking to the track record of the professional in looking to the track record of the professional, looking to prior claims, looking to see that they're perhaps part of an industry scheme that ensures quality. And those quality aspects, I think, are an important part of the insurance arrangements. But you might be able to address that, Mr. Tong, in your answer.
Uh, thanks, Chair. And I do agree that good record keeping is actually, I guess, represents a good risk management for businesses regardless of what's the size of the business we're talking about. However, I guess back to what Kirsty said regarding the insurance requirement and also the regulation. From my engineer's perspective, I, like I say, for me, I've been talking with a lot of members at Engineers Australia. And even before the regulation, it would be really, I guess, rare for an engineer not holding an insurance when they sign a contract for their client. And even there's only, like I say, one or two cases, probably out of a hundred, I talked with, those one or two are willing to put their asset as a way to insure their clients if any negligence happens. What is tricky on insurance and also the regulation is actually to determine the adequacy of insurance. That is the tricky part. Because the thing about this, if I'm an engineer and I've been, like I say, I've been running my business in the past ten years in residential space, for me to understand how much insurance I should hold to be registered and prove that I have adequate courage of insurance for all the projects happening in the past ten years will be almost an impossible task. And also based on what Insurance Council Australia said, insurers in the hard market, they don't have an ability to provide an insurance product that eventually will capture all those respective risks from the past. And hence, again, just makes this task for engineers to assess the adequacy of the insurance and hence getting qualified to be registered through the new regulation an impossible task.
Mr. Tong, I want to, can I just ask a follow-up question to that, David? I think to Mr. Nugent, Mr. Nugent, I think you referred to it in your opening remarks, the retrospective element that's, that seems to be a matter of concern here. I think you're aware that that actually was an element introduced in the bill as a result of amendments moved by, I'm not quite sure if it was by David or not, but either by Labor or the crossbench when the bill was passing through the upper house. So, and I think there was some discussion about the potential problems that potentially could arise by that retrospective element at the time. That's correct, isn't it, Mr. Nugent?
That's right, Mr. Khan. So in terms of where that came about, the retrospective came to pass through amendments that were made to the bill as it was, as it was put forward. I guess going to the points that have been made around that and PI and should it be in and should it be in, in the act or not, I guess we look to the points around what P I does. And as I indicated before, professionals are going to purchase P I. We don't have a problem with the regulations setting out that P I is there. It is, what is the scope of P I that is required under that legislation? Does it go to a point that brings about more cover than what that professional is actually working on? And how does that play? The second point to that is on this D L I proposal, the decennial liability proposal. Working backwards, if we're looking at a consumer protection, at the end of the day, the, the commentary here seems to be that we look to protect consumers. If we're providing protection to consumers through D L I, it would be more than likely and highly reasonable and expected that an insurer in doing any risk assessment is going to go back and check who is doing the work and require that those builders, developers and other professionals hold the relevant professional indemnity insurance for their work as they're doing it, to ensure that there is, i- if there is an issue in, in, in the future relative to that, that the insurer has a right of recovery against another insurer or a professional or wherever it might be down the chain for the causation of that percentage of the risk that that individual or that professional was responsible for.
Well, look, Ms. The Adam has been waiting very patiently, and I do want to go to him. But I might come back to this issue and ask you, Mr. Nugent, if, if, if some of the issue is because of the way the policies are written on a claims made basis, rather than covering the, 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 the work from the date at which the policies are made. And maybe get some clarification on you there, but I'll come to Ms. The Adam first because he's been extremely patient.
Thank you, Chair. That actually is a nice segue because I was going to ask about this issue, which I think was raised in the Consult Australia submission around contracting out of proportionate liability in professional services. And I wonder perhaps if Ms. Yulunstein, you might be able to elaborate on that issue and explain it a bit further.
Thank you very much. So the Civil Liability Act in New South Wales allows contracting out of proportionate liability. And of course, proportionate liability allows someone to be held for, liable for the part of the loss that they caused rather than the whole of the loss. So obviously very important for designers and consultants who have one element in a project but is not responsible for the whole project, especially if you think about the number of designers that might be involved in a multi-level residential building, for example. When the Civil Liability Act was introduced, it was part of a national sort of approach for proportionate liability. And it really came out of an insurance crisis for the P I market. And it was to really limit professional services. And I don't know if Corey's available to talk more about this, but the Insurance Council Australia would, you know, probably give you a nice history of civil liability reform. But the concern is for our members is that proportionate liability is great. It allows us to know what loss we will be liable for. We are only liable for the loss that we cause, makes perfect sense. We can sign up to that, we can manage all of our projects and all our potential liabilities. However, in jurisdictions like New South Wales that allows contracting out, we get a lot of pressure from clients to contract out. Obviously, that puts pressure on the, the business to make sure that they can cover, cover all losses. If something happens, they may end up being the only person standing, the only business left standing to cover the losses for the whole building. For the longest time since I've been at Consult Australia and since this issue came out with contracting out, Consult Australia has been very strong on seeking to get that proportionate liability secured, at least for professional services contracts, because that is the reason why it was introduced in the first instance, to really stop any P I market crisis that we saw when it, when these reforms were introduced. We know that in Queensland, for example, the Civil Liability Act there prohibits the contracting out of proportionate liability. And that is a welcome reform. We know that when the civil liability reforms were initially introduced, to ensure that proportionate liability, the insurance industry was positive about it, but they are less positive about it now that there's so many jurisdictions that allow contracting out or are silent on contracting out. And we see our consultants, you know, forever fighting to get proportionate liability secured in contracts. So it makes it a real difficult environment in which to operate and makes it very difficult for us to manage our risk. As the Engineers Australia said there about, you know, very important that for our members to manage their risks, if they can't secure proportionate liability, you know, managing those risks becomes even harder.
Mr. Nugent, do you have something further to comment on, on that element of this?
I would agree with, I would, I would agree with Christie, Mr. The Adam. The, the issue in that space is, as I indicated in our opening, that insurance and premiums are determined on the basis of risk, where a risk is presented and the scope of that risk is widened either by virtue of proportionate liability or all liabilities being passed on to a professional, whether that professional is specifically or directly responsible for that or accepting it by virtue of contract, that expands the risk. Expanding the risk expands the premium because the premium needs to meet that proposition. Um, so I would support where Christie's at, but understanding where that sits is, is critical, I guess. And I'll, I'll leave the rest for that.
Can I ask, so I mean, just to clarify, your, your submission, Mr. Nugent, is that the, uh, the decennial liability insurance is the solution? Who would hold that policy?
I'm, I'm not sure what I'm saying, that it is the solution. I'm certain that it, it is one that is being investigated and that would be something that government and, and a number of stakeholders should be a party to that conversation to identify how it wo- would work practically and how it should operate in order that there aren't unintended consequences such as retrospectivity of P I insurance. So in looking at those sorts of elements, we talk to this and say that P, P I insurance or professional indemnity insurance is not the silver bullet, for example, that many people are putting that out to be. It is not a product, no matter how you regulate it or want to regulate it, it is designed to provide a specific set of cover for specific circumstances to a cohort of professionals within the building industry. As Christie alluded to, I think it was Christie before alluded to that, any one engineer or consultant or whoever it will be will do a specific set of work on any single class two building. And there could be dozens of those professionals do separate, independent work. Each of those should have their own P I policy. Each of those should be requiring or providing that protection for their work, not for everybody else's. And that's where the risk comes in, is when that liability is, is sought to be expanded beyond the remit of the work that was actually done, it will have risk and then premium and consequences.
So it's not, you, 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 you don't have a settled position in terms of whether, I mean, were, were the requirement for P I to be removed from the act, then something would have to be put in its place to remedy the, the whole series of problems that Mr. Shibber just alluded to earlier. And is, so, I mean, it's not, is it your submission that, that, that D L I would be entrenched in some kind of statutory arrangement?
I'm not sure that the Insurance Council is saying, we're, we're saying remove insurance from the act entirely. We're saying we need to look at the settings that are relevant to insurance. And D L I is an important one in that space. If the end position of the regulators is to find a protection for consumers, that needs to be a consumer protection product, not a professional liability coverage that's expanded in scope to be something that was never intended to be.
I was going to ask Ms. McMaster about, in your submission, you raised the issue about other ways to reduce the risk. And you talk about independent third-party review and mandatory inspections. Can you perhaps elaborate further on how you think that might, what, what further measures might be taken in terms of reducing the risk?
Yeah, so look, I'll speak in the general and then I'll hand to Baoying Tong, who's our building reform agenda expert. But in the, in the general case, this is high on our list of priorities, reducing the risk and improving risk management practices of the engineering profession more broadly, but specifically in the building and construction sector. And we've got a range of initiatives underway, you know, spanning everything from demonstrating competency of engineers through the registration credential and our charter credential, through to providing practice guides and protocols on risk management practices. But to the two initiatives that you mentioned specifically, I'll hand to Baoying Tong. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Jen, and that's a great question. And I guess to give a, I guess, short version on what we, why we said this about these two things. First, for the mandatory inspections, it should be made clear that in New South Wales, when we're talking about mandatory, also called critical stage inspections, it's mostly, uh, the requirements will mostly set under the environmental planning and assessment regulation. And if you look up the regulation, what you see is actually, first, it doesn't require a engineer to provide inspections, rather it actually gives the power to the principal certifiers. I think it is a good arrangement when the principal certifiers, they actually have the right expertise and also the technical knowledge. However, if sometimes if, say, the building has really complicated structural designs, then maybe an engineer is actually better placed to do that inspection. And second issue with the current requirement is also on the, what, what's the, to what extent are we inspecting the buildings? To give an, to give you an example, if we look at that clause from, from the regulation, what you see is if we're talking about waterproofing, as per regulation for critical stage inspections for waterproofing, if you are building a, a, a house, basically you have to inspect all of the waterproofing aspects of the house. Whereas if you are building, as say, a ten, a ten level apartment building block, based on the regulation, the, the, based on the regulation, there's no requirement for you to inspect every single aspect of the waterproofing. And you can only go for the minimum, minimum, which I believe is thirty percent, based on my memory. But that's why we think trying to provide some more stringent, more robust requirements on the mandatory inspections, on mandatory inspection a- aspect would certainly help to safeguard the building qualities. Another issue, another proposal we mentioned is around the third-party independent, uh, independent review. And that, that is actually a consistent recommendation from all those recommendations, from the B C R report, from the, uh, the Moscow Tower Report and also from the recent Skyview Tower Report. So that is a constant, constant theme. And for the industry, I know that engineers, I'm an engineer and I'm always very proud of what I'm doing. However, engineers are also human beings and sometimes we do make, make mistakes. That's why it is important to introduce, you know, like I say, at some level of third-party independent reviews uh to help, to help safeguard the quality of designs. What's equally important is also when we have this, it, it, it should be truly be independent. And that, that being said, it means that the design, original design engineer should have very limited, I guess, dealings with the proposed third-party reviewer. Both are actually recommendations directly from the B C R report. And similar to what I said before regarding the building menus, the A B C B team, they actually, they have started and actually completed consultation on recommendations in regards to these two aspects from the B C R report. And I, 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 and I understand that the A B C B team, they are now taking everyone's inputs on the consultation papers and eventually they'll, they'll, they'll make them into model guidance for all the jurisdictions to consider to, for, for implementation.
Thank you. I might hand back to the Chair to.
Thanks, Mr. The Adam. Mr. Nugent, in terms of the issue about insurance cut out for retrospectivity, I asked you, I said to you earlier, is, is this part of the problem being that when you issue a professional indemnity policy, it's on a claims made basis? So claims made in the year of coverage, even if it covers work that may have been done by the insured in this case eight or nine years ago? Is that, is that the issue that's created difficulties with costings?
Now, the insurance issue there, Chair, thank you for the question there. The, the issue with, with that detail is that the insurance product is built and designed on the basis that it, that it is delivered. It is designed to provide protection for those professionals on a renewal basis. And the premium is calculated on the basis of the experience of that product from a claims perspective. And that is drilled down to the relative segments of that, that industry. Where regulation is imposed in that position to change the scope of that cover and the delivery of that cover and widen it, that will have premium and policy impacts on the way that product is delivered. Then looking backwards to that, if you are then to say, well, we will change the mechanism on the way that the policy is delivered and bring with it a requirement to pick up liability for ten years prior, that logically will have unintended consequences that bring with it additional liability which are unpriced.
Well, one of the ways forward in this regard would potentially be a regulation that says the insurance pre- the insurance product that's required since, you know, when it, when it comes in effect in the middle of next year wouldn't require to cover, wouldn't require retrospectivity from before the commencement of the, of the act. In that regard, that might be one way forward. Have you explored with the government those kinds of options?
We've had a number of different discussions, discussions with government. I know I have colleagues at the Insurance Council that have had deep conversations with government around how those things work. The insurance industry is only able to respond to the regulation as the regulation is passed by parliament. So we are required to respond from a pricing and policy point of view to the parameters that are set. Where those parameters are unable to be priced, then, then that has a, has a different consequence. And what that looks like moving forward, we, we are most open and we continue to engage with government around changes in, in the Construct New South Wales program and the legislation related to, as I indicated before, this is a transformative process and we are still well inside that transformation period.
Mr. Nugent, you know, one of the reasons why the retrospectivity was initially put in the government's initial bill, I might add, and yes, it was amended by amendments, was because of a, a highly controversial High Court decision that overturned what everybody had previously understood to be um, um, the law in this regard and therefore defeated claims by, 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 by future building owners, if you like. So actually what the legislation did was restore the status quo. And, and, and that was, there was a compelling reason for retrospectivity, wasn't there, Mr. Nugent?
I, I, I take your point, Chair. The, the, the position in terms of regulation and how that's regulated is one for the regulators. We certainly engage with the regulators and talk to, to those issues and advocate from our respective positions for those on the panel here as to what those consequences are. Where courts make determinations and there's need for change, that's fine. I think the important point made there in your question, however, is talking to consumer protection. And I'll reiterate the point that I made earlier, the professional indemnity insurance is a product designed for professionals to protect the professional liability. If regulators want to see consumer protection, then regulators need to provide a position of consumer protection, that being a consumer protection product. And that's where we've gone to the position of D L I insurance.
Well, Mr. Nugent, there's a long tradition of professional indemnity insurance being of a scope sufficient to protect the use, the, the consumers, the customers of professionals. You could look to the legal industry, you could look to the medical industry, where professional indemnity insurance has very clearly been required to be of sufficient strength and sufficient coverage to ensure that patients and clients of professionals are, are fully protected. Is this a, a recent and novel interpretation about professional indemnity that's coming from the insurance industry now, given that history?
No, it's not. No, no, Chair, it's definitely not. And, 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 and to that point, professional indemnity, professional indemnity insurance is a very important class of insurance. It protects a very big cohort of people across our economy. And it would continue to be that product. And it has provided significant benefit to a number of stakeholders across the, the economy when that, when those issues occur. However, in that space, we have seen more recently, and I highlighted the claims results earlier on, that the proposition coming out of that is that the, that from a global point of view, Australia is considered a highly litigious environment and we are seeing much larger claims come about as a result of litigation. There are anecdotal examples for, for, for instance, where people are in courts fighting legal, legal cases of six hundred, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of costs without spending a day in court yet. These things draw These things drive to claims experience. These things drive premiums. These things drive that proposition. So what I'm saying and our position is not that there is one simple answer to this. It is a complex issue that all stakeholders need to continue on this transformative journey to find what the right settings are to achieve the balance that you're seeking in, in that question. And I think there's a few, few answers in that.
No, I think there was, but we can't get too philosophical because we have about a minute left. Ms. McMaster, could I ask you in terms of, have you sat down with the government and spoken about whether or not there are options involving the statutory insurance product that your members are required to have, not having retrospectivity that predates the commencement of the Act? Are those kinds of live discussions you're having?
Again, I'll defer to Baoying Tong and the specifics of the conversations we've had, had with the government. Thanks, Baoying.
The answer is no, we haven't got that much, I guess, opportunity to talk about the retrospective needs of the insurance with government. However, we do have, have conversations with the insurance market regarding the retrospectiveness of the, of the, of the insurance. And that being said, for engineers at the moment, there are not that many options on the, on the, on insurance market. That's why we are not in a position to, I guess, to pick and choose. And that's why we'll need to see what, what happens with the insurance market first, then decide.
Thank you all for your time today. Unfortunately, time has beaten us. And I don't think, I think there may have been one or two questions taken on notice, in which case you have 21 days in which to provide the answers to that. But I thank you all for your assistance today and for your submissions and for your ongoing engagement with these quite tough regulatory issues. We'll now be having a short recess from the committee and we will be resuming to fifteen P M. Welcome back to the final session of today's hearing of the Public Accountability Committee's inquiry into the regulation, or lack thereof, of the building industry in New South Wales. This afternoon, we have evidence from the certifiers, two of the key certified groups for, for New South Wales and Australia, evidence from the Australian Institute of Building Surveyors and from the Association of Australian Certifiers. I'd, I'd like to thank all three witnesses for taking the time to attend this afternoon and for the assistance they've given the committee through the submissions that have been put in. Could I ask each of you in turn to give your name? To give the title and the position in which you're appearing today and then to take either an oath or an affirmation. And then I'll ask you, if you could, to do it in the order of Mr. Slack Smith, followed by Mr. Turner, followed by Ms. Brookfield. Mr. Slack Smith?
Thanks, Chair. Yes, Charles Slacksmith is my name. I'm, I'm the treasurer of the Association of Australian Certifiers. And the oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So help me God.
Thanks, Mr. Slacksmith. Mr. Turner?
Thank you. My name is Jeremy Turner. I am Technical and Policy Manager with the Australian Institute of Building Surveyors. I'm happy to take an affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Mr. Turner and Ms. Brookfield.
My name is Jill Brookfield and I'm Chief Executive Officer at the Association of Australian Certifiers. And the affirmation I give is I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Now, thank you again for your attendance today. Maybe perhaps going in reverse order. I'll give you the opportunity now, if you wish to take it, to give a brief opening statement addressing the core issues. And Ms. Brookfield?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thanks to the committee for inviting us to attend today. The Association of Australian Certifiers represents registered certifiers employed in private practice and in local government in New South Wales. Our members work across New South Wales, in the inner city, the outer suburbs, and in regional and remote communities across the entire state. These members work across a variety of different parts of the construction industry, from residential construction to commercial projects and crown projects. As their industry association, the A A C is committed to improving standards, increasing accountability, and putting consumers first. This has seen us advocate for increased accountability in the industry for a long time. As many of you know, for too long, there has been a lack of accountability across the entire industry. We have always advocated that all building practitioners, from the developer to the builder, the designers to the certifiers, and all the contractors must be accountable for the work they do on building sites. Multiple inquiries have supported this simple proposition, but it has taken a very long time to get here. We are finally heading in the right direction through the government's current building reform process, and this is welcome. However, it will take time for this to wash through the entire industry. We also think there are three key areas that still need to be addressed. Firstly, broadening the reforms beyond higher rise residential projects and increasing the regulatory focus on more practitioners, including subcontractors. Secondly, improving communication from government to industry. And finally, reducing the regulatory complexity for practitioners and the public. We also recognize that driving reform and cultural change is not just a matter for government. Industry must do its fair share and that is what our organization has been focused on. Fifting standards, improving the culture, and ensuring consumers are put front and center. A central, central pillar of this effort has been the development of a professional standard scheme. We are in the final stages of finalizing our application, which will be submitted in the coming weeks. The A A C believes that P S S is in the best interests of our members, their clients, and the general public. A P S S will enhance and improve the professional practices of A A C members and elevate the standards in the delivery of members' services to their clients. A scheme will also help the A A C expand and enhance our already proven education services for members to ensure they remain informed of best practice and customer care. While we also recognize that this is not a silver bullet in addressing every issue, it is the right move for our industry in improving our professional practices. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Ms. Brookfield. Mr. Turner?
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to appear today and commend ongoing efforts to understand how best to regulate and to provide appropriate consumer outcomes, which is the ultimate goal of the terms of reference for this inquiry. The cornerstone of any effective system of regulation, and particularly for the building industry, is to protect and give confidence to the consumer. And it is this interest of the consumer which is the basis for the A I B S submission to this inquiry. There are key aspects of the A I B S submission which are central to this objective of protecting consumers. The A I B S Professional Standards Scheme for Building Surveyors operates across all states and territories and obliges A I B S to monitor, enforce, and improve the professional standards of members under the scheme, thereby reducing risk for consumers of professional services. The A I B S Professional Standards Scheme upholds professional standards of scheme members who are building surveyors and assures that consumers have access to appropriately qualified and skilled building surveying practitioners for representation and advice. The benefit to consumers of this scheme from this assurance is that the professional standards of scheme members meet those required by A I B S, which include formal education and experience requirements for registration by state and territory governments and the Professional Standards Council. This ensures that consumers are well-served by appropriately qualified, experienced, ethical, and responsible building surveyors. The improvement in professionalism brought by participation in a professional standard scheme is also a direct consumer benefit. And indirect benefits arise through reduction in compliance and complaint investigation burdens on regulatory bodies. We take great pride and satisfaction that the A I B S Professional Standards Scheme for Building Surveyors is the first such scheme to be authorized for a practitioner group that is also required to be registered. And especially a practitioner group that has the public's interest as its key objective. While A I B S has made significant gains through the scheme for professional accountability of its members, not just in New South Wales but right across Australia, undertaking a vital and important role for the benefit of consumers nationally. We are just one part of the building regulatory system in New South Wales that overall consumers find ineffective, inefficient, and frankly, downright confusing. Our submission points to a range of macro reforms as well as a range of micro reforms, which taken together are aimed at more effectively regulating the sector and also providing a clearer understanding for consumers about who is responsible, why, and how this responsibility is to be upheld. If a broad-ranging approach to reform is to be adopted, we suggest this will produce a quantum improvement in regulation of the building industry in New South Wales. We have identified a need to collate disparate legislative controls into as near as possible a singular act overseen through a dedicated ministerial portfolio. Additionally, supporting consumer protection, we have identified a need to ensure as many of the various practitioners participating in the industry are required to become registered or licensed so that they can be made accountable for their work through active auditing by a dedicated regulatory authority. For simple and easily accessible dispute resolution pathways, including technical and contractual adjudication services and insurance protection for consumers via a universal mandatory requirement for practitioner professional indemnity insurance. We note that other submissions to this inquiry have also supported similar micro reforms which are likely to provide incremental improvements when taken in isolation and perhaps something approaching a quantum improvement if adopted as a raft of reforms. I note, we're not alone in identifying a need for collation of regulation within a single portfolio and act. The hard decisions about transfer of ministerial responsibility for regulation of the industry to a single portfolio are likely to yield the greatest benefit, enhancing the opportunity for the myriad micro reforms to be undertaken in a coordinated, timely, and planned manner. We're delighted to have the opportunity to contribute to this inquiry and look forward to assisting your understanding of the issues that you might need.
Thank you very much. Mr. Slacksmith, did you want to make a contribution or does Ms. Brookfield cover the field?
No, Ms. Brookfield's covered the field, so for me.
Terrific. I might just ask an initial question, which is, it goes to the, the A I B S's submission, which is the need for a consolidated building act and with that, effectively a building minister. I mean, given the very large proportion of our economy that's covered by building and construction, it seems remarkable that that big chunk of the economy has responsibilities split up between so many disparate parts of government. What do you see as the merits of a consolidated building act and with that, a single, single ministerial responsibility? Mr. Turner?
The, I think the most important thing there is a clear responsibility or pathway of accountability within government or regulation of the industry. One of the things that we identified in our submission is that there is a significant difficulty at the moment in, I guess, assigning responsibility for any particular issue that might arise within the building industry. Where multiple ministers can kind of point to multiple portfolios and various shared responsibilities and, and potentially not take responsibility where otherwise it might exist. So I think it's really important to have that clear accountability within a portfolio so that any, I guess, need for regulatory reform can be firstly carried out effectively. But also, the identification of a need for reform becomes far simpler also, where you have a, a single department that supports the ministerial portfolio that has that responsibility. And there's, there's, I think, some pretty clear examples of where this might have assisted recently, within the last two or three years. We currently have multiple pieces of legislation that require practitioners to register for different purposes for effectively the same work. So under one piece of legislation, you'd be required to be registered in one criteria. And, and in order to comply in, in respective work on Class Two buildings, there's a new suite of legislation requiring a different set of registration criteria be complied with, et cetera. So we are seeing duplication of regulation at the moment in New South Wales, which is, I think, exceedingly difficult for practitioners to wrangle in terms of meeting their compliance obligations. But also I think it creates a real difficulty for anybody that seeks to hold somebody accountable for some work that they've done. You've got to identify the right piece of legislation within which to pursue them and allege an offence and, and then obviously carry that through, through the legal systems. So there's, I think, some substantial benefits in, what did we say, the condensing of requirements into a single legislative instrument.
Thanks, Mr. Turner. It might be a neat way of distinguishing between the two, two organizations as we have the institute with you, Mr. Turner, and then the association is Ms. Brookfield and Mr. Slacksmith. Does the association have views on this? About the consolidation of the legislation and a single building act and building minister?
Yeah, we've, we've also put that in our submission as being something that would be, would, for reasons that Jeremy has outlined, just create that clarity and, and reduce that ability for duplication. So, yeah, we, we agree what the A I B S has been saying on that panel.
Well, one of the issues that's regularly raised about private certification is the conflict of interest. If the client basically chooses the certified, and we've seen many cases where there's longstanding commercial relationships between a private certified and a particular developer. And that can, as we've seen on a good many instances, end up compromising the independence of the certified and ultimately compromising the quality of the building. Ms. Turner, I might go to you first. Do you have any views about that?
Yeah, look, we've heard multiple people say that there's been people compromised in that way. We're yet to see any hard evidence that demonstrates that that is in fact the case. And one of the things that's particularly interesting about that is that we've had a code of professional practice in place for a very long time. And we've also had an accreditation scheme in place for a long time. And any of our members who are alleged to have compromised themselves in regards to a conflict of interest would contravene the requirements of our registry, our accreditation system, but also our code of professional conduct. And we've not yet been asked to investigate that sort of complaint. And you would imagine that if that was the case, that we would have seen something. Now, that's nationally, not just New South Wales. We also note that the New South Wales regulator has been actively auditing building surveyors or registered certifiers in New South Wales for many, many years. And we are not aware yet of a registered certified who has in fact been penalized because of a conflict of interest issue. There's certainly been penalties applied where they've failed to act accordingly or, or contravened other requirements. But we don't believe that there's one related to that. So that's, I guess, the first point. The second point around this is that even if you do have a longstanding engagement with a client, that doesn't prevent you from acting professionally. And certainly, members who are participating, members of A I B S and therefore subject to regulation by A I B S through the Professional Standard Scheme, should expect that they would be audited and where there was any impropriety found in relation to an engagement, that they would be subject to an adversal audit finding and therefore penalties regarding their ongoing participation in the industry. So there are mechanisms there, both within the regulator, but now also within the co-regulatory space by A I B S to address conflict of interest. We believe they're adequate. We are happy to hear from anybody who thinks that they're not adequate and therefore that we do have an issue that we need to resolve because clearly we would very much like to make sure that that is resolved if that is in fact an issue.
Mr. Turner, to be quite frank, that seems to utterly ignore the evidence. I could give you the name of one certifier who had twenty-nine findings made against him from two thousand and five by the building, by the building practitioners, but twenty-nine. And it took the twenty-ninth before that particular certified was removed from the field and then only temporarily. I could point you to six. I could name them. Six certifiers who between them had a hundred and eleven findings against them by the Building Professional Board, a hundred and eleven, just from two thousand and five. And they continued to practice and sign off building after building after building. And these certifiers had close and continuing relationships. And these certifiers had close and continuing relationships with one or two developers throughout the course of that. That's not, you're telling me that it's fine, that there's nothing to see here. Is that your evidence, Mr. Turner?
I'm certainly not condoning actions of certifiers, registered certifiers who've been disciplined. I believe that, you know, there are certainly examples out there of people who haven't practised appropriately. And it is good to see that the regulator is taking an interest and taking steps to deal with those.
Tony, you must have not have heard me. The regulator had this one particular individual 29 times.
David, I'll take the point of order. The witness is answering your question. You should let him finish before you jump down his throat.
Quite frankly, I thought he must have misheard and assuming, I just want to be clear, I'm not saying the right.
That's unfair. That is unfair.
I will, I will allow Mr. Turner to complete his answer.
Thank you. And look, certainly, I'm not aware of the details of the actions that were taken. It may well be that there has been a conflict of interest issue, but one that I'm not aware of. But what you're saying is that just 29 examples for one particular practitioner where they've been disciplined does not automatically equal a conflict of interest. It may in fact equal a lack of competence or a different interpretation of legislation or something of that nature. But I certainly wouldn't be prepared to state that that was a conflict of interest issue. Yeah, I hope that answers your question satisfactorily.
Mr. Turner, if an industry regulator, it takes 29 proven breaches from a building certifier before they're removed from the field, that's a sign, isn't it, of regulation failing? Particularly in terms of ensuring the quality of certification. If it takes 29 proven breaches before the regulator, before somebody is even given a temporary suspension, the regulation is not working, is it, Mr. Turner? Or do you say that's not evidence of that? That's fine?
Look, I wouldn't, I wouldn't reach that conclusion directly from the fact that there's been 29 instances of disciplinary action. Bear in mind that there are a range of disciplinary actions available to the regulator. And these can be applied for a variety of different breaches or offences. Some of these are minor kind of matters where it might be that timeframes have not been met properly or perhaps incorrect documentation has been lodged or things of this sort of nature which are administrative in nature and not likely to cause, I guess, damage to the reputation of the industry and profession or indeed to potentially create an unsafe situation. So we do need to take into account what these different findings related to before we can understand exactly whether or not we've got an issue around this regulation process. But we've been on record in the past of saying that we believe that the regulators, not just in New South Wales but nationally, have been ineffectual at ensuring that practitioners who haven't been performing satisfactorily are appropriately dealt with. And we are very pleased to see that the building commissioner has been, you know, the position of the building commissioner has been created. We certainly notice that there's been a shift in the culture within the sector that's constructing and involved in class two buildings, the apartment building sector. And we are very encouraged that in fact that culture is moving towards a far greater degree of voluntary compliance than we have seen in the past in that sector. And we believe that that model is appropriate. And that is a model where we have an active, motivated and effectual regulator in the space. And it should be available, whatever class of building somebody is doing, so that we have a much better chance of ensuring that we get the right consumer outcomes.
Well, Mr. Turner, if we're talking about consumer outcomes, do you agree that if people have been found to be repeat offenders and serious repeat offenders, that they shouldn't have a role in the industry?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Well, what about Mr. Lyle Dix, who was found 15 times serious breaches? One of them including approving an occupation certificate for an apartment building which had no toilet pans, pan basins or bathroom taps. And eventually after 15 findings over the better part of a decade, was at his licence as a certifier suspended, but now continues to be the managing director and the principal owner of the corporation that provides exactly the same building certification services. Do you say that's evidence of a system that's working?
Look, I think that every system has the capability of improving and some far more than others. And I wouldn't want to make any comment about any personal circumstances of any practitioner. I'm not in a position to do that. But certainly if you have an ability, not only within building surveying spheres, but also within the construction and development spheres for directors of companies who are associated with several failures or breaches or disciplinary action and the like to simply reinvent themselves through another company structure or those sorts of things, we most definitely have a significant gap in our ability to regulate the industry effectively. And I.
Sorry, Mr. Turner, if you can.
Yeah, look, AIBS is on record asking and suggesting that we very much need better regulation to prevent that sort of thing from occurring, where you have a known offender who isn't doing the right thing, simply bobbing up somewhere else to continue in the same vein, but under a different structure.
Well, that's exactly what we have with Mr. Lyle Dix. And I'll read to you from the website of Dix Gardner. Dix Gardner Group are well known and regarded as one of Australia's preeminent building certifiers, operating in Australia since 1998. They continue to have a large market share. They continue to aggressively promote themselves. Yet the principal, Dix Gardner, has a series of quite shocking repeated findings against him. That's an evidence, that's evidence of the industry not being well regulated, isn't it, Mr. Turner?
Oh, look, it may well be. I don't know the detail of that and I'm not prepared to comment about Dix Gardner or Lyle Dix.
Ms. Brookfield, do you think, in light of the examples I've given you, the Dix Gardner example, the other certifier having 29 found proven breaches against him before he's eventually temporarily suspended, do you think that the system's working here?
I think recently it has changed. I think with, not that I want to talk about specific certifiers, but like with Lyle Dix and the others, that was under a different legislation. So, and the work of the building commissioner is making great inroads into fixing, fixing the issues. And I think they're the exception to the rule. Most certifiers take their role as a public official very seriously and endeavour to do the right thing. But there are the outliers that will do the wrong thing. But the commissioner is actually dealing with those people now and we support that.
But the building commissioner doesn't have any direct regulation of certifiers. It's not part of his statutory role. Are you saying that his shaming power in the media is the answer to regulation in this space?
No, no, not the shaming of people within the media. It's the practice standard and other initiatives that are happening that go a long way to help. And I think the government in the past has not been there to support. They've been more of, you know, come with a big stick instead of supporting and educating and communicating with the certifiers.
I'm a little confused by the evidence that you're each giving, that the building commissioner is the answer. I'm not aware of any kind of statutory, of any statutory oversight role that the building commissioner has of private certifiers or certifiers more broadly. Perhaps you could point to me what the statutory role is the building commissioner has of oversight in certifiers. Mr. Turner, I'll start with you.
Yeah, look, I'm also in agreement with you there. I don't believe that the building commissioner has direct authority over the registration of building certifiers in New South Wales. They do conduct audits into the activities of registered certifiers. But what I was suggesting earlier was that in fact it would be appropriate for a legislative system to be established where we have an act which is within the responsibility of a single ministerial portfolio. And that act should ideally create a policy body and then also separately a regulatory body. And I would imagine that we have a ready-made regulatory body in the building commissioner and the building commission in New South Wales. And this in fact should be applied across all classes of building. But also it should be regulating all practitioners in the building industry. And that would mean building surveyors as well as builders, developers, designers, et cetera. So at the moment, you're quite right, building surveyors are not effectively regulated by the building commissioner. Our suggestion is that perhaps this should be a consideration of the parliament.
Ms. Brookfield?
It should be the role of fair trading to, to audit and, and look after the building, building certifiers. They're charged with this. And then every industry has some bad eggs and unfortunately our bad eggs are out there to be seen. But the fair trading should be doing more. They should have audited. They've not been auditing for a long time. It's only been recently that the audits have started again. So as far as, like I said, education, training, keeping everybody up to date, fair trading has, I think, not, not taken on that role as they should have.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Turner, did you want to add something?
Yes, I wanted to add an observation, if that's okay, which is, I think, related to this, this issue that we're discussing. And that is that building surveyors who are registered as building certifiers in New South Wales are one player in the whole process of ensuring that a compliant outcome is achieved. And if there's a significant and perhaps some dedicated focus on whether or not building surveyors are doing the right thing, I think, I fear that we may be missing half or more of the story. Clearly, something doesn't get built incorrectly simply because a building surveyor doesn't realise that it's been designed incorrectly and fails to pick that up during the approval or assessment process or indeed during the inspection process post-approval, but prior to authorising occupation. There's somebody who's drawn it that way. There's somebody who has physically ordered the materials and so on and physically put it together that way as well. So it's a team effort. And I think that the regulation of the industry needs to be the focus rather than whether or not a building surveyor, who in effect is the goalie standing in front of the net, is doing the wrong thing. There's a whole team of people out there who've got to make sure that that ball doesn't get to the net. And the regulator is probably the last line of defence in this process. And if they are not supported by the rest of the system, then clearly there's a very limited opportunity for the regulator to ensure that things work as they should in favour of the consumer. At the end of the day, the reason we need to regulate the industry is because the consumer tends to be at a very unequal bargaining position compared to the industry. And so therefore there needs to be somebody there in the corner of the consumer to make sure that they get what they need. And that's what we're all aiming for. And obviously there are some out there who, for whatever reason, miss the target. And we need to make sure that we're all alert to that and looking for it. I note that in Queensland, they have adopted the model regulations regarding supply chain of building products and materials. That's yet to happen in New South Wales. And I would certainly be looking for greater responsibility to be imparted on people involved in the supply chain regarding non-conforming building products. That is a significant thing in support of ensuring we don't end up with combustible cladding on buildings and the like. Or even as we saw with the Perth Children's Hospital, where we had materials inclusive of asbestos used in certain parts of that hospital building, causing some problems there. So if we have that supply chain responsibility and we have a regulator capable of ensuring that that is happening, I think we're going to be in a much better place than where we are.
Thanks, Mr. Turner. We'll come back to some of those issues, I'm sure.
Thanks very much, Chair. And thank you to both the Institute and the Association for your really helpful submissions and also for your time this afternoon. I wanted to, I would, I should just say, I would very much agree with the Chair's proposition about the need for a single building act. And I think that point that you made, Mr. Turner, around the duplication of regulation that comes from these, I think, in your submission, you pointed, oh, sorry, it was that, that it was, yes, it was in your submission that you pointed out there's 16 separate acts that are actually governing the industry. And I think that that just shows that there is a need to consolidate that. That was certainly a recommendation from our previous inquiry. And I think that that's something that perhaps with the addition of more layers of regulation is probably more timely than ever. So that's very, very helpful. Thank you. I wanted to move to a slightly different role, a slightly different question. And that was one that the Association outlined in their, in their submission, specifically around cladding and the need for a Victorian style response. We heard from councils this morning about the detailed and rigorous process that they're going through, but that it's happening at council by council. It's not actually happening in an overarching response. And also the need for significant financial support for building owners going through the process. First of all, I'd be interested in both the Institute and the Associations' views on, on what we could do better in terms of our response in New South Wales, given that we now have Project Remediate on the, on the books, so to speak. And if you could just give any feedback about specifically how you're finding and your members are finding, building owners are actually being able to navigate the system. Perhaps we go to the Association first?
Yep, I can take, I can take that one. Thanks. Thanks for the question, Ms. Soss. Yeah, look, cladding, cladding has been, you know, it's a global issue that's come through to Australia. It's, you know, it's not just New South Wales and not just in Australia that this, this product's been an issue. Look, we've always called for a national approach to cladding, to make it consistent across the, across the country. Certainly in New South Wales, it's certainly been a little bit slower than other states in regards to, and I think that's due a lot in part to the complexity. And also Project Remediate sort of having quite a conservative approach to their, to their response to it. So we think, look, it could be moving a bit faster. We're finding that it's not, you know, it's not, not as fast as other states. The panel we would like to see, you know, to be able to take more of a sort of a risk-based approach to the buildings as opposed to a one-fits-all type approach and quite a conservative one at that, to try and speed, speed these things up and deal with these most risky projects initially and then fly through to the, to the less risky rather than blanketing all in the same, in the same bucket. And then, yeah, and like I said, that nationally consistent approach would be advisable as well.
And to the Institute?
Thank you. Yes, it's a very next question, actually. And right from the very beginning of this issue, we were advocating for a national approach to a range of aspects of it. And the first is in identifying what is a risk that needs to be addressed. So just the mere fact that you have a combustible element on a building does not automatically mean that there is a risk that needs to be dealt with. And we certainly see this all day, every day with buildings where non-combustible construction is required. However, the building code does have in it a range of materials that although combustible, are deemed to be acceptable where non-combustible construction is required. So. So our non-combustible external walls are already, to a certain degree, allowed to be combustible. And if we have a you know, the aluminium composite panel product that had polyethylene core in it and typically at fairly high proportions of the combustible polyethylene core, if that is in a fairly small proportion of the facade of a building and the rest of the materials that are already permitted are scarce, there's a reasonable chance that that building is going to offer a safe environment for the occupants. And what we need to do is understand that risk in a very consistent way, in a very open and transparent way, to give everybody confidence in the processes that are at play to ensure that everybody can invest in buildings and occupy buildings in in full comfort. That sadly is lacking right across the country. There are few examples of regulators who are effectively identifying risk appropriately. Most are focused around triaging buildings. And that first step involves identifying whether or not the building has a combustible product on its facade somewhere. And then obviously stepping through a process from there. We do see some examples where we have competent people who are evaluating the risk of those buildings and providing reports. But unfortunately, the insurance industry and public perception very much are dictating how these buildings are dealt with. So that in almost every instance, there's no tolerance for any combustible cladding products on these buildings at all. And that is actually quite an unreasonable position for many, many instances. The issue that we have then is that in Victoria, for example, there's a fund that's been established. But the Victorian Government at the same time has also said that they will be taking steps to recover the the money that they're required to pay out from that fund. So that there's actually no relief for the insurance sector in relation to this risk. Interestingly, Minister Quigley in Western Australia identified helpfully that there was an issue in regard to how the building code provisions were set out, so that there was some ambiguity in his view. The building code was amended to reduce ambiguity. It does seem to me quite reasonable for governments to accept that there has been a degree of ambiguity in the past and that perhaps there is therefore a need for governments to contribute to the cost of reinstating cladding. And I would suggest that it's in everybody's interest, therefore, for the process to be very clear in terms of identifying risk that needs to be addressed, but also in terms of the extent that that risk needs to be resolved. Because obviously that will minimise the cost to both the consumer and ultimately either the insurance sector or governments for making good any cladding that needs to be fixed.
I mean, I want to just specifically, and I might come back to the Association first. I appreciate what you've both said about having a national response. And I think we agree, that's why we have the National Construction Code, I'm sorry. The idea is that a lot of these problems are solved best at a national level. In effect, though, we've got state governments actually responding. And in Victoria, they put a significant amount of money there, they've also provided a clear set of standards, universal standards that need to be applied. Is that easier, perhaps to the Association first? Is that an easier way for your members to operate if there is a clear single standard that that everyone is working towards?
Yeah, I, look, I think it would, I suppose the detail is where that would come in into play in how that one consistent standard was approached. At the moment, that standard is quite a conservative one. So, you know, whether it's, you know, like a unsprinkled high-rise apartment building with barbecues on a balcony is completely different to a hermetically sealed office with sprinklers in it purely from a risk-based point of view. Whereas they're both treated the same way in regards to the the cladding ban that's in place from it. So there is no risk there. So so that sort of consistent risk-based methodology of assessment and triaging that could then lead to some methodology of funding for to to get this replacement on those risky buildings happening quicker would be appropriate. And I do take Jeremy's point in regards to that ambiguity. And and that's maybe why, I don't know the reasoning behind the Victorian Fund, but that could be them taking some ownership of that ambiguity. You know, to, because it's obviously happened nationally, globally. It can't be just a New South Wales regulatory issue or even a National Construction Code issue. There obviously was ambiguity that was used by manufacturers and testing thing to slip these products in for 15, 20 years around global regulators. And then to then have it funded by insurers, then ultimately by premium payers seems, there's got to be some sharing of the costs in regards to that in in getting this stuff off those risky buildings so that we can get that safety back to those buildings that are at most risk.
Mr Turner, would a universal or a single standard of remediation across the state, would that assist your members?
Most definitely. The the clarity that would come from that would be, I think, extremely helpful. I noticed that in Victoria, they have a rapid assessment tool, which is a process of generating a fairly detailed triaging of buildings that have been identified with combustible cladding materials. But they don't have a standard that has been set. That that rapid assessment tool doesn't set a standard, it it just simply identifies a level of risk. And then somebody needs to go through and do a very detailed analysis of of the of the risks that actually exist. Not simply just using the course assessment tool that they've produced. Look, I think that that rapid triaging process has a place. But certainly what's missing, I think, is a really sound and agreed, nationally agreed set of criteria for identifying the thresholds of exactly when a building is safe and when it is not safe. And therefore, when we need to act or or don't need to act. I noticed that the Society for Fire Safety through Engineers Australia have produced a guideline for their members to follow. And that has had a bit of circulation, but is yet to receive adoption in jurisdictions nationally. So I think that there's some opportunities there, there's plenty of work that's been done in this space. I think there's plenty of expertise at the table. What's needed is, is, I think, a coordinated way of bringing those those voices together so that we can get an agreed outcome. The sooner the better, because I think at the moment, what we're seeing is very likely a large amount of money being expended that's potentially not needing to be expended. And that's hurting consumers right now in New South Wales, because there isn't any other way to fund it other than through data fees and all. And that's a significant problem, you know, if they're believing that they have a risk to deal with immediately, well, of course, they're going to act. And and in the absence of any evidence that proves to them that they don't need to act, I think that they're completely and utterly hands-tied behind their back in having to do that.
Thanks very much. I'm mindful of the time, so I might hand back to the Chair, thank you very much.
Thanks, Miss Soss. I think Miss Etienne had some questions.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the witnesses for your attendance today. Look, I might start with Mr Turner. I am, I wonder whether in your submission, you talk about the professional standards scheme, which your association is a party to. And I suppose I I wanted a bit of clarity about exactly what you were proposing in terms of this this scheme operating in New South Wales. Could you perhaps elaborate on that a bit further?
So the scheme is effectively, the Professional Standards Council has authorised AIBS's structure, organisation, it's an occupational association. So its members regulate the practice of its members according to the rules set out by the Professional Standards Council within the legislation. And that is mirrored nationally, so it is a scheme that operates nationally. Now, what we were saying is that there are some opportunities that arise because building surveyors are also required to be registered in New South Wales as registered certifiers. So in effect, that registration body in New South Wales is regulating the profession and so is AIBS as the professional association operating a professional standards scheme. So that becomes an opportunity, therefore, to reduce that duplication. And so, well, okay, to the extent that AIBS is identifying people with appropriate credentials, et cetera, to practise, the regulator doesn't need to do that. And so it can simply say, well, if you are a practising member of AIBS, that you are able to be registered in New South Wales as a registered certifier on the on the basis of of that membership. And there would be obviously a discount in the fees for that registration commensurate with the the reduced cost of administering the the registration scheme for those members. And obviously, there would be an appropriate level of auditing and that's reported back to the Professional Standards Council. We're accountable to the Professional Standards Council for regulating the profession, et cetera. So there's, I think, a pretty good advantage there.
So can I clarify, under that scheme, it's a condition of AIBS membership. So in order, you have to meet the professional standards to remain a member, to become a member and remain a member?
Yeah, so there's a range of structures that we have that our members agree to subject themselves to. So there's clearly a continuing professional development scheme and they must meet the requirements of that scheme in order to remain as an accredited member of AIBS. There's also the Code of Professional Conduct and they must observe all of the requirements of that. They need to have in place a complaint mechanism so that if any consumer is concerned about their conduct or practice, that they can deal with that readily and effectively. And certainly, AIBS also has a consumer complaint receiving process so that if any member is is not behaving correctly, consumers have an avenue to deal with it via our investigation process. They must also, our members must also submit themselves to technical and administrative auditing by AIBS's audit panel through its auditing scheme. And that is a very sophisticated audit. It looks very, very deeply into the practice of the practitioners to ensure that their standards are appropriate and acceptable. In fact, the auditing requirements that we've established are more stringent than any auditing requirements of any regulator in the country. And we're very proud of that. And and certainly, we believe that's a very, very important part of regulating the industry to make sure that there is confidence in the practitioners that we we recognise.
And do you have a disciplinary committee that sort of monitors the complaints and takes disciplinary action?
Yeah, look, there's a process set out within the auditing scheme, which describes how members are dealt with if they're found not to be behaving correctly. But certainly also through the complaints mechanisms as well. So the AIBS board is the ultimate decision-maker regarding disciplinary matters and adverse audit findings. And certainly, if we find that a practitioner has practised in a way that potentially jeopardises public safety or the safety of the occupants of the building, there's a mechanism in place for that to be reported very, very quickly as well, so that it gets dealt with in in respect to the safety aspect of it. But certainly also, the the outcome for practitioners would be that they would be facing loss of accreditation and therefore an inability to continue to practise.
And Ms Brookfield, do you have a similar structure for your association or as a, or sorry, Mr Slacksmith?
Oh, sorry, I wasn't going to add to that one, I was sort of just going to add to the AIBS's thing. The withdrawal of that auditing and regulatory oversight from government to, you know, potentially multiple private organisations and associations may lead to, you know, that additional complexity being, you know, further further enforced in regards to, you know, a consumer wants to make a complaint about a particular professional, they need to work out, A, what professional they are, what association or or institute they're accredited with, be it AIBS or another organisation or Engineers Australia or, you know, any of that. As a consumer, trying to work through that complexity, I would would think having that solely within the remit of a single government building ministry or the like would make that certainly a lot simpler from a consumer's point of view in regards to, you know, this person's done this, can you can you assist? No problem, we're on to it, whatever it is, we'll deal with it. So so I was just going to add to that. In regards to our scheme, I'll I'll hand over to Jill just to talk about that on our proposed basis.
So do you operate a similar scheme, Ms Brookfield?
The mechanics, the basics are the same with the auditing, the education, risk management, complaints, all of that sort of thing is going to be similar. And it's basic within the professional standards schemes. The, what will be slightly different is the way we manage our members and how we don't have an accreditation scheme that AIBS does, so our membership will be slightly different. To be a member of our association, our members will have to be part, our certified members will have to be part of the scheme. But the, as I said, also that we're still in the final throes of verification, so we're just nutting out those final.
I see, so you don't have a scheme operating at the moment?
Not yet, no, we will be hopefully submitting our application within the next couple of weeks.
So how do you currently manage professional standards within your association?
We're an advocacy and membership body, we don't necessarily have complaints, we get very have never had a complaint against a member from from the public. And these are dealt with through fair trading.
So can I ask then, was Lyle Dickson a member of either of your associations?
Yes.
He was, and what about Tom Miskovich, is he a member of the associations?
I'll have to take that on notice, I'm not sure.
Brendan Bennett?
Brendan Bennett is.
Is a member? Mark Kago, a member?
I have to take that one on notice as well, I'm not sure.
I suppose what I'm getting at is, I think you you refer to people as being bad eggs. And I suppose I was trying to establish, you know, obviously, certain individuals who clearly have had complaints sustained against them remain members of your association and by by association, bring down the reputation of certifiers and building surveyors. And has there been any kind of disciplinary action, disciplinary action taken against any of those individuals by your associations?
Yeah, we we've certainly taken disciplinary action against some of our members. And there are a number of members who've in fact had their accreditation rescinded because of actions that we've taken against them. It's it's, where it comes to our attention, we most definitely act. And look, I'd take on notice the names that you've mentioned also. I wouldn't, I don't have a member database at my fingertips, I couldn't tell you whether or not they have or or are currently members. I would make the observation, though, that, by the same token, that you know, if if somebody is breaking a speed limit in a vehicle, yes, that creates an issue for all of us in terms of the reputation of drivers. And I'm not saying necessarily that it's the same sort of offending and the like, but what I'm saying is that you will, from time to time, have somebody who faces a disciplinary action. And as I said earlier, the nature of that disciplinary action is very important in respect of understanding the what we're actually dealing with. I I think in large part, most regulators around the country have taken a lot of actions about fairly minor and trifling-type offences because they're easy. In fact, the really difficult and challenging offending that's occurring you know, in in some instances, is much, much harder to take action over. You need a lot more evidence, you need a lot more resources. You need a lot more evidence, you need a lot more resources, and typically the defence of those sorts of actions is going to be significantly more strident and therefore it's much more costly for a regulator to take it on. And this is why it's incredibly important to have an appropriately resourced, well-motivated and in fact, an accountable regulator on the beat, making sure that this happens. So we're certainly doing everything that we can. We're looking to the rest of industry to step up and do what it can. And we'd certainly encourage government to do what it can as well in this regard.
Surely it accepts that if you're advocating for a co-regulatory system, then you have to have pretty impeccable standards in terms of enforcing the plan of the profession.
Yeah, absolutely. And we we would have no compunction whatsoever in expelling somebody from our profession, from our membership, if they were misbehaving in a way that simply couldn't be tolerated. I mean, that's absolutely a fundamental thing to what we're doing. It's 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 central to making sure that consumers are protected from the profession.
Mr. Turner, have you done that in the past?
Absolutely, yes. There are members who have had their membership rescinded, their accreditation rescinded. And as a result of that, they've lost their ability to maintain registration and have been removed from the industry.
Could you tell us, if you can on notice, how many times in the last ten years that's happened? How many members?
I I can find that out for you, yes.
And can I just add, sorry, Anthony, one one name to each of you to ask about if they were a member, Glen Fitzgibbon. Is Glen Fitzgibbon a member of your body, Mr. Turner?
I'd have to take that on notice, I'm afraid.
Ms. Brookfield?
He was a member, but not for many years.
So was it the twenty ninth breach that saw Mr. Fitzgibbon lose his membership with your body?
Uh, no, it would be when he lost his accreditation, he lost his membership.
You see, it's it's hard to understand, you know, how your organisation could could be consistently wanting to have high standards and then have a member who'd been found to be in breach, some of them quite serious, twenty nine times by the regulator. And then even then, you don't take action until the regulator eventually removes the credentials. I I don't understand. Mr. Slacksmith, maybe you can help him?
Yeah, look, I think we've got to consider what like what the organisation is. Our association is advocacy and education. By removing them as a member, yes, I take your point from a, you know, from a PR approach of a membership, that's that's appropriate. But it it deems no, if they're not our member, they can still get accredited or registered by fair trading. So it doesn't stop their ability to trade, it doesn't stop their ability to do the work and the like. And in fact, and by removing membership, they're actually, and I'm not, I'm not advocating what these players have actually done. I'm not saying that. But what I'm saying is we're removing their access to education on best practice and standards and changes and regulations, which we do a lot of in the industry, almost filling a vacuum by government in educating the industry and certifiers. So by a membership being removed, certainly from our association, removes them, almost puts them further in the dark in regards to what they should be doing. And that does nothing in regards to their ability to trade, practise or become or be a certifier in the state and continue signing off buildings. So if we cancel their membership, they lose education, but they can still keep working based on.
I can ask a question to that, David?
This is Anthony's run, so.
It's okay, I've fielded, I'm happy for you guys to.
Mr. Slacksmith, I hear your last answer, but what message does that send to your remaining members if what you in essence do is allow continuing membership by, and I'm not talking about any particular person, a rogue, and I use the term advisedly?
Yeah, look, it's the same deal that comes back, like Jill was saying, you lose their accreditation, they lose their membership. So it's ultimately the regulation, the auditing, the enforcement and the eventual and the booting out of people is the responsibility of fair trading. I take your point in regards to the viewpoint of it and what it looks like. And to be honest, we'd have to check our records, but a few of those members have no longer become members as a result of things coming out like that. And I I don't, it wasn't the twenty, I don't believe it was the twenty ninth version, it might have been earlier than that. But same deal, we're not regulators, we're not accredited, we're not accrediting or registering people. They lose their accreditation, they lose their membership. Certainly, it's something we can take on board in regards to removing a membership, but they lose that access to any form of changing practices and education by not being a member.
Mr. Slacksmith, you're you're in the process of having a professional standard scheme put in place, so.
I'm I'm talking historically. All these, all these people are historical people essentially. So I was talking about it, obviously, once the PSS comes in place, that's a whole different, different, that's a different situation. I'm talking about articles and current association.
Mr. Mr. Slacksmith, it's Trevor Khan here again. Your explanation was an explanation, not historically, but a rationale for keeping rogues on the books. That is, you're giving them an education. Well, I I've got to say, I I suspect you're the first professional association in my sixty-three years I've come across that actually doesn't see the maintenance of a professional standard as a fundamental tenant of its own organisation. You're essentially saying, let's go for it.
No, no, that's not the point I'm making at all. I'm not, I'm not saying that.
I'm giving the opportunity to explain it and.
So what I'm saying is that, yes, if there is a rogue there, their membership, and we're taking that on notice in regards to those particular players and what's happened with their membership. But what I'm sort of, what I'm trying to say is, yes, they can be removed, but it's, you know, from an education piece and finding, you know, finding out about what should be done or responses to audits or, or, you know, things that have been found in the industry and then educating, educating members on what has happened and what you shouldn't be doing is is that piece and having a member there. But I'm certainly not though, you know, any rogues that are that are found is certainly not welcome in our in our association. And I'm, I don't have the details on removal of membership or the like off the back of that.
Well, I I still am in Anthony's time, but let me ask you this, and it sort of goes back to what Mr. Shubridge asked you at the very start. What's the position of your association with regards to a certifier that is that is the applicant on a DA and also is the certifier on the same project? What does your association say with regards to that practice?
Well, it's 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 illegal. You can't do that under the legislation.
Well, I'm asking you as as far as your association, what has been your position of your association with regards to it?
That it's against the regulation and you can't, it can't be done.
Well, I I I'm not trying to be cute. I I'm just trying to work out as an association, as a representative of professional persons, apparently, I'm trying to work out what the independent thought process is that your organisation applies to good practice. And if what you constantly say is, well, it's purely dependent upon the upon the regulation, then let me suggest to you that your association is an association of professionals in name only. I'm I'm interested in what you stand for beyond accepting a membership.
But definitely not. Look, our our goal, advocacy, education, and 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 Jill, I don't know the the main articles for for our thing, but it's our predominant piece is education of members and advocacy of the professionalism of our membership. So we do that, yeah. Sorry, I got jumbled there. What was the question?
I I I'm interested in what Mr. Turner's view is as to whether his organisation has a view about what the professional ethos of building surveyors is. Have you got a sort of a rationale that you can advance?
Absolutely. That would be a clear breach of our professional code of conduct regarding avoidance of a perception of a conflict of interest indeed, or an actual conflict of interest. And we would certainly be very concerned if a person who was a member of our organisation was both the applicant and the statutory building surveyor assessing were involved in engaged in in a statutory role for the same project. That would certainly be unacceptable, and we would definitely take action where we to be aware of that.
Would you have the same, as a private certifier, who 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 worked with the developer on an engineering solution to a matter and signed off on a deemed to satisfy solution? And then, which they themselves had been a part of conceiving.
Look, if if you've been involved in the design, you should not be involved in a statutory process in relation to that same project. That is unequivocally clear in our professional code of conduct.
Mr. Slacksmith? I mean, it happens all the time. That's why I'm asking you. It happens all the time. It's consistent across the industry. What's your position on it?
Yeah, if that was to be was to be occurred, yeah, it's against our our policies and procedures as well.
You're not suggesting to me that that this is some kind of hypothetical. I mean, Mr. Turner, Mr. Slacksmith, Ms. Brookfield, you all know that this happens all the time. Or or are you willing to accept that? Or do you wish to contest that fact?
We we would certainly agree that it does happen quite frequently. One of the issues that we have in New South Wales in particular is where a member is subject to a complaint in relation to their conduct within our our scheme currently. Whilst our accreditation, et cetera, is not recognised by the Registration Authority in New South Wales, the member can simply withdraw their membership and that ceases our ability to take action in relation to that person in in very large degree. So if they ever wanted to come back and be a member, we would obviously pick up that issue again and we would keep it on our books. But certainly, it would end our ability to take action against that person. That's not the case in Queensland, ACT and South Australia, where our accreditation scheme is recognised within the registration process. So if we are challenging somebody's accreditation in in any of those jurisdictions because of these sorts of issues, then they can't avoid it by simply withdrawing their membership. They would also need to cancel their registration. In doing so, that means, sorry, their accreditation, which means that they would automatically be ineligible to maintain their registration in those jurisdictions. And so therefore, they would have to cease practice until such time as they could become accredited and therefore re-registered either with us or with somebody else. So I I think that the issue that we have here is that whilst we're not in the position of being recognised within the accreditation, the registration process, we do have limited powers to take action in regards to these people. We certainly do look at members and the the reputation that that membership has in regards to the profession and and our organisation going forward. That is a key part of our our code of professional conduct. And we would, if they wished to continue with their membership, we would certainly be taking action if there was a person who was, you know, dismerching the industry in that way.
All right. In in the time available, I'll just go, sorry, Mr. D. Adam. Had that rounded out your line of questioning? Did you have something you wanted to put at the end?
No, that's fine. I'm I'm done. I'll hand over to Mr. Ms. Shee.